A quorum being present this town meeting. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Just a few very quick remarks tonight unless town meeting decides otherwise. We plan on beginning where we left off, Article 24, then proceeding to 25, which will probably need a little bit of an explanation. After that, we'll go back to 11 and do the budget, and then we'll finish off with the instructional motions. We now have four, by the way. The fourth one asking the town to consider changing library hours when the new library is completed. With that, business under Article 24. Mr. Arena.
That can't be good. Arena broke the mic. I'm just gonna go by holding it in my hand here. Article 24 is...
We can start with the motion?
Oh, sorry. Thank you. Move that the town vote to amend Article 2-15 of the Redding Home Rule Charter as follows: Language with strikeout shows deletions; words in bold denote new language.
Mr. Bonazzoli moves that we dispense with the further reading of the motion. Is there any objection? None appearing. Is there a second to the motion? Thank you. Mr. Arena.
I'm proposing to change the referendum procedure to Redding's Home Rule Charter. Since 1990, we've had three referendum petitions submitted. Since 1986, we've had four. Everyone in this room has the ability, as does anyone in our town, to take issue with what we voted on and ask for a redress of their concerns. They have the means to take an affirmative vote that was passed here, and if they're able to collect signatures, compel this body or compel this town to reconsider the question. All that has to happen within seven days. This is existing language that's existed in our Home Rule Charter, the referendum procedure, for years. Since '86, there have been four such referendum procedures. I remember three of them. Two of them had to do with the schools, budgets typically. Most recent was in 2010, where you might remember that the meals tax generated some... the institution of the meals tax generated some interest and led to four separate petitions being submitted to the town that were all substantially the same but differently worded. Some cast the language in the positive, some cast the language in the negative, but after a fair amount of internal review, it was decided to treat them as a whole, and in doing so, the aggregate signatures met the statutory limit. Following that 2010 event, language was put into the referendum petition to require the petitioners to submit identical copies, exact copies, of the referendum to avoid the circumstance where petition A differs from petition B from petition C, to avoid the interpretive aspect. And that's a good thing, because it avoids the circumstance where a signer of the petition may not completely understand what they're signing, or the phraseology may differ in a petition from another. But having exact copies produced by multiple persons is very difficult, and the statute requires that the petitions be created by hand. It gives a particular recipe for how to construct them, the language, the format, and so forth. All of us in this room arrived here through a form of a petition. We pulled our nomination papers, we went around and got signatures, we submitted those to the town, and we were sworn in to become town meeting members. That's a form of a petition, and those forms were pre-printed. You had to fill your name in, and that's generally not hard to do, and your address, but the balance of it was routine. Language, the commitment you make, the oath you take, were all pre-printed for you to be able to do. The purpose of that is to avoid confusion on the part of the petitioner or on the part of the individual that's making the oath. It makes it very simple and quick to have a standard, pre-printed form. At the state level, the state also requires pre-printed petitions. That is to say, if you're gonna petition the state for a change in an act, the Secretary of State also compels you to go to the Secretary of State and be furnished with a pre-printed form which has the common language. When you go out and find... get signatures from members of the... from members of the town or members of the Commonwealth, individuals signing understand in advance what the question is. You're not creating the petition. It's an act of getting a signature and getting agreement with the question, not an art form to try to create the petition in the first place. But in our case, with the referendum petition, as it currently stands as of 2010, petitioners are required to create their own petition and are required to submit it and have it be an exact copy of any other petition. And so there's a natural conflict there. If myself and Mr. Brown decide independently to create petitions, it's highly unlikely they're gonna be identical. And so this amendment would require the town, in an event a petitioner chose to pursue a referendum petition, to be able to obtain a pre-printed form of that document from the town clerk. The advantage of that, beyond the commonality and the uniformity, is that, as many of you know, for those of you who are relatively new to the process, we commonly take amendments from the floor, friendly amendments or others amendments that may change the language or the intent of the original motion that's made on the screen behind me. It hasn't happened in this meeting, but it's not that uncommon. It gets kind of awkward sometimes, but the point is, it's not obvious until the following day what motion has actually been made and passed. And so an ancillary benefit of having the town clerk produce a referendum petition is that the exact language that was passed is preserved. Again, it avoids the conflict where the petitioner makes an innocent mistake, uses the language going into town meeting, not the language coming out of town meeting, and avoids the circumstance of being told, "Look, you got it wrong. The form's filled out wrong. You created the petition wrong. You got the wrong question." All that can be avoided by working through the town clerk, and all of that assures this exact copy result. There are no other change I'm proposing to make to the bylaw. There's no change to the days of access. There's no change to the current bylaw construction. There's no change to the criteria that's used to judge the petition or the process that's used to judge the petition. There's no change to the number of petition signatures or the process to determine the number of signatures. There's no change to the review and challenge process. You can still review and challenge any signature on the page or whether the form has been marked up or not. All of that existing language is preserved. The only change here is to make it routine for a petitioner to get a pre-printed form so to avoid the risk that they're disqualified innocently through a construction error or through a difference in the way the petition is created. The town clerk's effort would be to prepare a blank petition form once. Think of your nomination papers. Pre-printed, you filled in your name, there was an area for the signatures to be placed. An analog to that would be a form, pre-printed, minus the question that's being challenged. That question in its final language would be cut and pasted in, and you'd hit send. So the entirety of the form, the structure of the form, the disclaimers on the front, the statutory language would all pre-exist. You enter in only the sentence or the claim that's being challenged, cut and paste, send, print five copies, send it an email, and you're done. To my way of thinking, other than the creation of the template, which might take perhaps an hour or so, production of regular petitions should be a routine task. The board talked about this motion a few weeks ago, and the two comments I got were that this change of making it routine for individuals to get a petition reduced the barrier to special elections, that somehow we might be incentivized to have more people challenge what we do here. I think it's wrong. The claim is flawed in two ways. First of all, the best defense for being challenged is that the 192 of you and the five of us and the balance of our town representatives do the absolute best job we can to listen to our citizens. That's the best defense against being challenged, that we've done the job right in the first place. I don't believe making it difficult for people to execute their ordinary interest in representing themselves or putting artificial barriers in, gee, you filled the form out wrong, is an effective way to have us represent ordinary citizens. We're here to represent the electorate. The 192 of us were all elected as the best the town has, and we ought to make it routine in the cases where there is an honest disagreement for people to elevate that. The second objection I've heard is that this problem's never happened. We've never had a circumstance, the system we have since 2010 has worked just fine. And the answer to that is, no, it hasn't. In 2010, we had four independent petitions produced that all differed. So in very recent memory, the circumstances happened. In that case, there was a substantial amount of review at both the state and the local level to determine that the four were functionally or constructionally identical. By the town clerk producing an exact copy, we eliminate the circumstance where we all have to then determine whether or not the submissions are identical. That's the bulk of my presentation, so I'll take any questions if there are any.
First, we have a bylaw committee report. Mr. Pacino.
Mr. Moderator, the bylaw committee recommends the outcome by vote of three to zero. We feel that it would clear up variances and a variance that may be in petitions.
Is there further discussion? Mr. Brown.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Bill Brown, precinct eight, and a petitioner of two or three times. The only thing that I can find on this, John, is way down almost to the last paragraph where it says the town clerk shall deliver five copies. Would not be better to have sufficient copies. Five may not be enough, depending on the population. Would you take that as a friendly amendment?
I certainly would. The intention was to create enough where xeroxes of the five could be made, but if that can be done expeditiously, that's fine.
It's number eight way down the bottom, Alan. I pretty much like the idea of this, and I like the idea of retaining the 3 percent. If anybody believes that 3 percent in seven days is easy to get, try it. I've done it three times, and I'll tell you, it's a lot of work. Thank you.
So the amendment you're asking to accept was changing the words "five paper copies" to "sufficient copies"?
Yes.
Is there any objection to that being part of the main motion? None appearing. Is there further discussion? Yes. Ms. Santholon.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Fran Santholon, precinct seven. Mr. Pacino, could you speak to... I don't quite understand the statement about the bylaw committee and the petitioner days. It seemed that the bylaw committee was... the bylaw committee was informed about aligning the petition days.
There originally was, in the original proposal, that there be a realigning of days. That was proposed here in the original proposal. That has been postponed until the subsequent town meeting in November. That part of the article. It's only the part of the article dealing with the setting of the actual petition format.
I'm sorry. Should've made that clear. As some of you may know, today, Redding's Town Hall is closed on Fridays. Our current charter defines two types of days: business days and calendar days. Those definitions don't quite square with a day that's a business day that the town hall isn't open. The proposed amendment has deferred any discussion about the definition of days for a more general treatment to clarify the definition of days for the entirety of the charter. It's not just this amendment or this bylaw that has a days definition in it. So today's conversation only applies to the production of pre-printed petitions. It does not attempt to change or alter or redefine the definition of days from that which was in place, which is in place today.
Further discussion? Not... oh, yes. Mr. Schubert.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Rick Schubert, precinct seven. So the way I understand this, the only thing that's being requested to be changed is the part that's in bold. One of the questions I've always had about this was that while we should afford citizens the opportunity to petition or challenge or get a second opinion on what this body does, the legislative body does, one of the problems, I think, and I think the previous speaker mentioned, if you've got multiple petitioners putting forth a petition, the language might This bylaw prescribes the format of the petition itself. The variable that would occur in any petition is the content of the language, whatever people, whatever the citizens want to challenge. So the scenario where you might have three or four petitioners come forward and their language doesn't match, that may have happened before, but I think it could still happen in the future. So if we accept this bolded language, we are then putting upon the town clerk the responsibility to negotiate or work with one or more petitioners. If, in fact, you have the same scenario where three petitioners want to challenge a town meeting action, they send language to the town clerk. The town clerk would then have to cut and paste that into a petition which they then distribute. So then what do you do if the town clerk receives multiple petitions? Are they then faced with negotiating some compromise between the petitioners where that really isn't their job? The town clerk's job isn't a political one, to understand the political process or get involved in the political process. My perception is by accepting this language, we would be just doing that. We'd be putting the town clerk in a position where they would have to mitigate a political process that really isn't their job. Thank you.
Mr. Arena.
Mr. Schubert, the answer to your question is in the top of page 39, section B, which prescribes exactly the form of the petition. There is no variability in the form of the petition. It's prescribed by the pre-existing language. The variability is in giving the author of the petition the recipe on how to build one, and then critiquing him if he's done it right at the end. The language is not in debate. It's the requirement that he build his own petition and then building in the ability to invalidate that if it's not constructed properly. This is the only petition we require citizens to write themselves. And to my way of thinking, that's an unfortunate consequence of the changes made, and I think an unintended consequence, of the changes made in 2010. This would remedy that by making it as easy to pull nomination papers to obtain a referendum petition. So there is no variability of the question in all cases, and I looked at the clerk to clarify that understanding, but at the top of 39, it describes precisely the form of the question that shall be included in the referendum petition if a petition is to be filed.
I guess I'm not... I don't understand what you're asking me. Maybe it's because I'm not paying attention.
If a referendum petition is filed, the form of it is prescribed at the top of page 39. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Further discussion? Yes, Mr. Schubert again.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Rick Schubert, precinct seven. I think the point of my observation is that the format of the petition is crafted, and that's what I'm saying. We can just stick with that. But the content of whatever the article is, right now, there's no prescribed content of the language of any type of town meeting challenge because those issues, we don't know what they are. They could be anything. As example given with the challenge of the meals tax, there were four individuals, three or four individuals, who proposed their own language. So again, what my point is that that can still happen with this particular wording, such that the town clerk would receive four different requests from four different citizens interested in the petition, such that the town clerk would be in the position to either A, cut and paste what each says and issue therefore four petitions, or B, engage in a process where they would negotiate and broker a compromise between the various petitioners, which that is not the job of the town clerk. Thank you.
Ms. Jim.
The way I understand this is what you're requesting is that the language that goes on the petition comes from the language from town meeting and what town meeting voted on, and that there's absolutely no debate of the language that would go into the referendum because it comes out of the town meeting language. So there would be no debate. Does that make sense?
Further discussion? Yes, Mr. Tuttle.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. David Tuttle, precinct three. As I understand this, there's nothing in the change that would try to prevent challenging the same action for three or four different reasons. It's perfectly reasonable to have four different people challenge the same decision for different reasons and have four different petitions. Now, that's... you know, maybe we could help by telling each person that somebody else has come with another challenge to the same issue, but there's no requirement or even reason to try and synchronize them unless the petitioners themselves want to do that.
At the top of page 39, section B, it reads, "The form of referendum petition question: Each ballot question submitted shall appear at the top of the ballot and shall be presented in the following form, which shall be placed on the official ballot." Quote, "Shall the town vote to approve blah, 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 blah?" The form is prescribed by the bylaw. It's not in debate. You're challenging the vote that's taken here, and that is prescriptive as to how to form that. The only debate is, do we ask people to create their own petitions? Or do we allow them to have a copy and therefore avoid the risk that they're later disqualified because they've constructed it wrong?
Further discussion? None appearing. Oh, Mr. DeDario.
I'm Mr. DeDario, precinct six. You know, I've been around for a little while, but I don't think I've seen a petition myself. So the question I have is, I understand that the... what the town clerk would do, and I think I understand what you're asking, and I could see that would be to question whatever was passed, and that's... we're just gonna question that. In the petition, is there any explanation as to why the petitioner wants the change? Is there any... is there an explanation? And there, if there were an explanation, then I could see where four different petitioners might have four different reasons why they were asking for it. So, yeah, Mr. Arena, could you just explain that?
The current language seeks only to compel the town to produce the paper copy. The existing language makes no requirement of the petitioner to dictate a reason. If you read at page 39, there's no existing language that compels, as I understand it, the petitioner to dictate the motive behind the challenge.
So the petition just asks to reconsider this particular amendment, and then the petitioner, perhaps while he's asking for a signature, gives his reason, perhaps when he's trying to explain it to people to sign it?
That's my understanding.
Is that the way it works?
That's my understanding. Peters just mentioned the current statute would forbid the inclusion of a rationale. It is completely prescriptive in what the words must say.
Okay, well, then, that seems to be an answer then. Thank you.
Further discussion? None appearing. I'll be ready for the vote. This requires a two-thirds vote, so could I ask for some counters? Mr. Brown, could you take my right and the finance committee? Mr. Crook, would you take the center, the right center? Mr. Rushworth, the left center? Ms. Russell, could you take my left, as well as the Board of Selectmen? All those in favor, please rise. Twenty-three. Twenty-three. Mr. Rushworth?
Twenty-eight.
Oh, twenty-eight. Phil?
Thirty.
Thirty?
Forty-two.
Forty-two. Those opposed? Two.
Three.
Three.
One.
One. Seven. Vote being 123 in the affirmative, 13 in the negative, the motion carries. Business under Article 25. Who do we have? Do we have someone to make that motion? Mr. Bonazzoli.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. We've had the town vote pursuant to section 2.6 of the Redding Home Rule Charter to declare the seats of certain town meeting members to be vacant and remove certain described persons from their positions as town meeting members for failure to take the oath of office within 30 days following the notice of election, or for failure to attend one half or more of the town meeting sessions during the previous year, or take any other action with respect to their two.
Mr. Edens Springer moves that we dispense with the further reading of the motion. Is there any objection? None appearing. Is there a second? Second. Now, this needs a little bit of explanation. We have several names that are actually in the motion that would be removed from town meeting if it's voted the way it is. If you want a name removed, you have to make an amendment to remove that name. So it's almost like a negative. If you want a name... if John Smith were at the top and you wanted to keep John Smith in town meeting, you'd have to make a motion to amend it, to remove that name. And the way we do it is we start by going through all of the precinct chairmen. Each precinct has met to discuss these. So we'll begin with precinct one, and the chairman is Thomas Ryan. Do you have a report?
No comments from the gallery, please. My name is Thomas J. Ryan, chairman of precinct one. We met in caucus on Monday, April 22nd, and to discuss two names that should be removed for not attending so forth and so on, Mark Pennett and Thomas J. Ryan. I don't know Mark Pennett. I'm familiar with Thomas J. Ryan. We didn't discuss Mr. Pennett because we understand he had already resigned from town meeting. However, as far as the fabulous TJ is concerned, the precinct one caucus decided I should retain my seat at town meeting and therefore recommend the town vote in such a manner that I would be allowed to keep my seat and remain as a town meeting member. Thank you.
Okay, so we have a motion to remove the name Thomas J. Ryan from the motion. Is there a second to that? Second. Further discussion? None appearing. All those in favor of removing the name Thomas J. Ryan, thus keeping him in town meeting, please raise your hand. Those opposed? The motion carries. On to precinct two, and the chairman is... Mr. Crook, Stephen Crook?
Stephen Crook, precinct two. We would move to delete the name Christine Ford and delete the name George Snow from the list.
And it's your intention to leave the other ones?
Yes. I would also note that Priscilla Ryan and William C. Ryan recently moved to the town of Plymouth.
Oh, okay. Did not officially resign. Okay. So right now, we have a motion to take the names Christine Ford and George Snow off the list, which would keep them in town meeting. Is there a second to that motion? Second. Any further discussion? None appearing. All those in favor, please raise your hand. Those opposed? The motion carries. Nancy Graham?
Nancy Graham, precinct three. We want to take all the names off the list except for John Tuttle.
Okay, so you're removing the names of Bertoni, Blanchard, Garcia, Hurley, and McDade. You want to keep them in town meeting?
Correct.
Correct. Is there a second to that?
Except, wait a minute. That list and the list I have in front of me are not the same. I have an updated one, and Shaila Spiny, who's deceased, is not on this list, but she's on that list.
This is the actual motion before us right now.
But now I'm keeping her in town meeting, and I don't think we probably want to do that. Because... Well, she's not on the list that I have, so... Okay, do whatever you want to do.
Is, is there a second to that motion? Is there anybody unclear as to what we're voting on? Okay. All those in favor of the motion, please raise your hand. Those opposed? The motion carries. Okay. Just update my records here. Precinct 4, we have none. Precinct 5, the chairman is Angela Bindah.
Angela Bindah, Precinct 5 Chair. We met last Monday and voted thirteen zero to remove Megan Boson, Boson from town meeting, so I have no changes to this.
Okay, all right. Is there any further discussion on that? None appearing. Precinct 6, chairman is Robert Lynch.
Precinct discussed this, and we want to remove Donna L. Dudley's name from the list.
Retaining her in-town meeting?
Yes, sir.
Correct. Okay, is there a second? Second. Is there any further discussion? None appearing. All those in favor of the proposed amendment, raise your hand. Those opposed? The motion carries. Precinct 7, John Carpenter?
Sorry, Mr. Moderator, John Carpenter, Precinct 7. Our precinct did not have a quorum at our precinct meeting, but we believe that Ms. Porter decides to no longer continue in-town meetings, so we'll let it ride as it is.
Okay. Any further discussion? Is there anyone that wants to discuss that name further? Precinct 8, the chairman is Mr. Brown.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, Bill Brown, Precinct 8. We forgot to vote on this, but you can fire me as precinct chairman, so town meeting can do as they wish.
Is there further discussion? The name on the list is Kevin Walsh. Is, I believe he was here, is that?
Moved to Precinct 5.
Oh, he moved to Precinct 5. Oh, okay. But...
I don't know what that precinct is.
Okay, I would entertain a motion to remove his name on this, so we can leave him in-town meeting. Is that so moved? Okay, is there a second? Second. All those in favor, please raise your hand. Those opposed?
Point of order?
Yeah, point of order, yes.
I believe Kevin Walsh was just elected at Precinct 5 as a town meeting member.
That is correct.
Should that seat be vacated?
That is correct. But it has to be vacated now.
So, then we would be leaving it on the list. This is a, you hold...
We can't hear.
Would, actually, hold on one second. We needed to get an explanation from the town clerk. She is suggesting that we leave his name on this list to be removed because he's already a member from Precinct 5. So, we should, we've had a motion to remove the name, which will leave him in. But we would, is there any objection to drawing that motion? None appearing. All right. So, we are now ready to vote on the, the motion as amended. All those in favor of the motion, please raise your hand. Those opposed? And the motion carries. Thank you. We, Mr. Bonazzoli moves that we take Article 11 from the table. Is there a second? Second. All those in favor, please raise your hand. Those opposed? And Article 11 is now before the body. Mr. Greenfield?
Move that the town raise borrow, borrowing, raise by borrowing or from the tax levy or transfer from available funds an appropriate, appropriate the sum of ninety million, seven-hundred-nineteen-thousand, five-hundred-and-sixty-one dollars for the operation of the town and its government for fiscal year 2014, beginning July 1, 2013.
Okay, is there a second to that motion? Second. Mr. LaLasher.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Just before we continue, I should explain how we, we plan on proceeding with this. Mr. LaLasher will give an overall review of the budget, I guess followed by Mr., a report by Mr. Greenfield. Then, we will have individual motions for each of these sections, each of the groupings of line items after that. We'll make a motion. Any amendments or discussion you want to have will take place at that time. We're, we're in various letters, A, B, C, and so forth. But we don't actually take a vote at that time until we've completed the entire budget. Then we take a vote on the entire budget. Sorry, Bob. Continue.
Thank you. If I may have permission to go over ten minutes total?
Is there any objection? None appearing? You have permission.
You're going to get a longer overview since it's not Thursday night. This, this first slide came out of a request from a lot of non-town meeting members, so it's a little simpler than maybe what you're used to seeing, but it's turned out to be fairly helpful. For the last three or four years, we've fixed the average assessed, or I shouldn't say average, we've fixed an assessed value home of four hundred thousand as a common denominator to look at the budget and to look at our revenues. In current year, FY13, that house pays almost six thousand dollars in property taxes, which is about seventy percent of the revenue that comes into the town. Over the last ten years or so, that figure has decreased. Property taxes used to be a smaller proportion of the revenues. State aid used to be a higher proportion. I think it's just helpful to know that, for, again, this four hundred thousand dollar house bringing in six thousand dollars of property taxes, there's another twenty-five-hundred dollars of other revenues that come along with it, if you will. On the spending side, you can see on the right-hand side some of the broad categories. And again, as for the general public, it's a little different than from town meeting. For instance, the school line here does not have school facilities. School facilities is put in infrastructure as a broad category. So, there's a few nuances that are a little different, but it still serves a good purpose to show, on average, what a household pays and what it gets for its payments, if you will. And there's a couple of things that have come along in the last few years that are interesting. For instance, the meals tax as a revenue generates about half of that cash reserves figure you see there, a little bit more than half. It's about half of a percent. And some of the spending you can see on the right-hand side, that last number is the only number the town meeting doesn't vote at. It's just subtracted from our state aid. That's essentially the price of having an MBTA train station in town. As part of the overview, I'll just quickly go through our reserve position and our revenues. Our free cash as of last summer certified, with all the changes that have gone through this body and the various town meetings since, is about five million dollars now. If you add in some other reserves, such as the FinCom reserves and unmarked, if you will, stabilization funds, we have about six-point-six million in reserves. And by the way, that includes a million that I haven't discussed yet as part of next year's budget. That's, that six-point-six million, as Chairman Bonazzoli referred to in the state of the town, is almost nine percent reserves. It's a very strong figure. The Finance Committee recommends a minimum of five percent. Naturally, the bond rating agencies recommend a minimum of ten percent, but they're bond rating agencies. In addition, we have forty R smart growth, and we've almost spent the funds we've received primarily on roads. But there is still some more funds to come in from Pulteau over the next couple of years of one hundred and fifty thousand each for maybe another two or three years. And you'll probably see that continue as spent on roads. From a couple of questions over the winter on regeneration from some residents and a couple of town meeting members, I added a section in the write-up just to give you a little better clarity. Regeneration is, is what happens when you spend less than you intend to spend or are allowed to spend, or when your revenues are higher than what you anticipate. Whatever those combinations work out to be, it's regeneration, and hopefully it's positive. It has always been positive in Reading, not always positive in other communities. If you read any of the details, you could see the revenues are fairly difficult to predict individually, some of them at least. But in aggregate, we do a pretty good job, and we usually, if I say usually, miss by a half a million to a million dollars by underestimating them. You don't want to overestimate them. One year, we did overestimate them. It was a little difficult. Expenses almost always, well, they, they always come in lower than was voted, but almost always at least half a million dollars. There's a variety of reasons. Part of that is, on the government side, you can see all the different line items you approve. The schools have one bottom line, the town has many lines. If a certain position is open in the Finance Department for six months, we just don't spend that money. That money goes back to free cash. In general, the reason I bring this up is because in the last three or four years, the Finance Committee has changed their policy, it may or may not continue, to use free cash to balance the budget, which is, again, what's going to be proposed tonight. I would argue that the first half a million of that is going to be regenerated, almost no matter what. And some on the Finance Committee might go as high as saying a million dollars of that is going to be regenerated. I may or may not agree with that. But the point is, when you see the budget later tonight proposes to use a million in free cash, that's not as much as it sounds. Most of that, if not all of that, will be regenerated. To take a quick look at revenues, some of these revenues are very predictable. Property taxes are fairly predictable. This budget is built on a high new growth number, which we are currently experiencing. In years gone by, when we've had certain projects being built in town, we've not always recognized the new growth until later, after it happens. It's important to note that a few hundred thousand extra of new growth is being counted on to support this budget because we can see the work in progress. This work will continue to support with revenues for another two or three years, and then that, that will probably stop, as far as we know. Two hundred and fifty thousand is a good long-term run rate of new growth. You know, now we're in the six hundred and fifty thousand dollar range for next year's budget. And again, you can see the reserves suggested are just over a million. Importantly, before reserves, the revenue growth is two-point-six percent, which over the last three years is pretty good. If you'd mentioned two-point-six percent five, ten, or fifteen years ago, it would have been horrible. That was more like four, four and a half, five percent, when state aid was going up quite sharply. That's one of the reasons the FinCom has chosen to use reserves, is just to boost that number a little to three percent, so the budgets in front of you will be a three percent To go over the budget very broadly, we are assuming the full two and a half percent levy, plus, again, the new growth, and the one million dollar of reserves. This should be sustainable for two years. There'll be a few hundred thousand that's not sustainable unless more projects come along in new growth. The reserve use, again, should approximately regenerate. On the expense side, as Dr. Doherty will get into, this fully funds the school committee requested budget. It restores some municipal positions that were cut in the last few years. And particularly, it makes very strong investments in capital and in some of the long-term liabilities such as OPEB that I know this body's familiar with. At this point, I'd like to turn it over to the Finance Committee report.
Mr. Greenfield?
Let me know if, can everybody hear me all right? Mr. Moderator, town meeting members, thank you for this opportunity to highlight the current state of Reading finances. I must acknowledge many town leaders, town and school leaders, as well as volunteers who produce this budget and the planning behind it. Citizens of Reading are extremely fortunate to have such a talented, committed team. The transparency, open and frank discussions in numerous public meetings go a long way to illustrate the thoughtful planning and to heighten public trust. Reading should also be proud that this budget was produced and our challenges met with a high and effective level of collaboration, which serves as an example for many towns. I, of course, need to acknowledge one contributor, Peter Heckingblattner. Peter's contributions will take much more time to cover in the coming months, so in this report, I'll simply acknowledge that Reading finances are an exemplary place today because of the talents, integrity, and commitment to the employees and citizens of Reading over many years. Every citizen of Reading owes Peter a debt of gratitude. With that, I'll go. I'm happy to report that in these challenging times, Reading is in a very sound position financially. We continue to have a double-A credit rating. Our cash position is strong. Our debt, thanks to many, including Bob, was refinanced at very low market rates. We are well along in investing in our buildings and infrastructure to bring them up to optimal levels, and we are managing taxpayer dollars optimally by most measures. Productivity and impressive conservation gains have allowed us to redirect funds to other budget needs. The success of the downtown and growing restaurant tax revenues have offered relief and are contributing to operations. Regionalization and cooperative efforts have been undertaken and appear to be improving services at existing service levels, at existing expense levels. New growth in Reading has produced new revenues and can be applied to operating budget and on a one-time basis to capital projects. We have budgeted increased funding for needed road repairs as well. Reading continues to be aggressive in seeking and securing grants, both for ongoing programs and for capital projects. In this budget, we strive mostly to maintain existing services with only minor increases. Similar to our pension liability, which we fund annually, Reading faces a similar significant liability for health insurance for retirees, referred to as OPEB. The objective of this is to eventually relieve the operating budget of this annual funding burden, and to have a fund sufficient to support the retirees' healthcare entitlements. In this budget, we again make a contribution to fund our OPEB liability. The Finance Committee will this summer discuss a more formal policy and consistent funding. Our long-term capital plan and funding policy are also proving to be valuable tools to anticipate funding needs and to bring down the likelihood and the added cost of emergency repairs and replacements. The Reading schools continue to strive for high goals, but also always, but are always constrained by limited dollars. Their dedication and talents have once again produced remarkable results, scoring in the top ten percentile in achievement and doing it with a relatively low per, per pupil spend. This budget was balanced with approximately one million in free cash, a practice we have used for the past few years, which rating agencies normally frown upon. However, we balance this out with a conservative budgeting and a strong cash, free cash position, currently well above five percent, as you've heard. The use of free cash has been an effective mechanism, but should be used with caution should the cash position lessen or the budget stresses increase. By most measures, we are positioned well for the challenges on the horizon. If you look forward, many of the gains in productivity and savings will benefit us into the future, but additional savings are less likely. Proposition two and a half limits may become more of a factor in budgets, particularly as inflation returns. Even today, with many expenses increasing at rates beyond our control and well above two and a half, we are faced with making cuts and tough service decisions to bring the budget into balance. In some ways, the two and a half limit is considered a healthy discipline, which forces the government to come back to the voters to request added funds only when priorities dictate. However, it is more likely going forward that the Reading will feel the effects of two and a hash limitation, two and a half limitation, and will need to make difficult service decisions. Also on the horizon are the future actions of the U.S. Congress. A great deal of uncertainty remains, and given the magnitude of federal challenges, potential exists for reduced funding for federal programs and to the states, which in turn means reduced funding to cities and towns. Our current strong cash position, positions Reading to have an optimal, optimally to deal with this eventuality. Reading has other capital projects enhancements to consider in the coming months and years. The Reading Library renovation, which came to a vote in April and was passed, represents years of work and is a tremendous opportunity to utilize significant state funds to address one of the most pressing building rehabilitation needs. The Killam School is in need of repair and renovation, again with potential to take advantage of state funds to partially offset the costs. A significant, significant investment in our water distribution system is required to improve water quality. in our water distribution system is required to improve water quality. This will be paid for primarily through the water and sewer fees. Acceleration of this effort and the potential to shift the part of the cost into the tax base will be discussed in the coming months. In the coming months, there will also be discussion about expanding preschool class offerings. You'll be asked to consider the funding, operating budget, and additional space needs related to this expansion. Phase two of the downtown improvement project remains on the horizon to improve Haven Street. These and other investments require careful consideration, and if done properly, can add to the quality of life in Redding and to the value of our properties. Redding continues to strike financial sound balance, taking a long-term view, facing tough decisions early, and being realistic and conservative in our planning. As a result, today, we give ourselves the flexibility to fund and address current and pressing issues. In this budget, you will find considerable focus on priorities set by the town and school, and, again, the pressing matter of substance abuse and other programs for students and citizens in need. Before closing, I'd like to acknowledge and thank Hal Toroman, who will be leaving Finance Committee in June, after nine years of service and contributions to the town of Redding from the Finance Committee. Thank you again for this opportunity to comment.
Mr. Lashar?
Before we get to the actual line items, let me spend a little bit of time on two slides. The slide in back of you is to give you a good overview of where we'll go next. I'll stand up and discuss some of the shared costs, beginning with line B99 shortly with a motion, and then go through the various municipal government line items. Dr. Dougherty and Mr. Lai will then go through the schools and the town facilities, and at that point, we'll have finished the general fund, and there's the 3 percent expenses, if you will, that I mentioned earlier. I'll then finish up by going through the enterprise funds.
Are we all set for the first motion?
Move that the town approve and appropriate the proposed FY 2014 budget as presented for line item B99 benefits, $13,565,050 to be provided as follows. Line B99, $1,050,000 for free cash, $350,000 from overlay, and the balance from property taxes, state aid, and non-property tax local receipts.
Is there a second? Second, Mr. Lashar?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. We should get the same height person. Before we jump right into benefits, I also wanted to show you an overview of these shared costs. This is the reason the school budget and the town budgets are so healthy this year, is because our shared costs are so low. It's something we've worked very hard to reduce. The first line item benefits has several parts to it. The pension assessment is done every two years, so we're due to have another study this summer. The last couple of years, it's been 4.5 percent, which is a little higher than what the pension board's desire is in the long run, but that's because the stock market had sold off a few years ago, and they needed to raise it to 4.5 percent. We'll see what happens next summer. The OPEB contribution, this body last week voted a few different pieces, but $420,000 was an initial general fund appropriation, and next year, that amount is increased to $450,000, and I want to come back to that on the next slide. And then there's a few other costs. You can see retirement costs at 3.1 percent are pretty well managed. Worker compensation, we've had some very good success, largely from hard work of the staff through a lot of liability, such as back strength training and things like that. Unemployment costs are also lower, particularly on the school side. Health insurance is usually the large elephant in the room, if you will, and it's good news this year, but it's not as good a news as last year. And part of this is last year's good news restated. Earlier in this town meeting, we moved almost $400,000 of health insurance surplus into OPEB. As a result, the baseline, if you will, for the budget was too high this year. So a 1.1 percent increase off of a base that was too high is really representing what our 5.5 percent increase in premiums was. So this number of almost 8.5 million is a 5.5 percent premium increase. I mentioned earlier that the $450,000 on the previous slide for OPEB was in the budget this year, and it's going to be something FinCom is going to discuss this summer as a policy. But for now, that's an important figure because this $8.5 million health insurance budget builds in no room for increased enrollment. Usually, we saw 1% to 2% increase in enrollment until the last two years, for several years. The last two years has been very flat, so it seems reasonable to stop building in another 1% or 2%, which is a lot of money. But if we do see increased enrollment before the next town meeting, the next annual town meeting moves money into OPEB, we may need to take some of that out and put it in this line item. The other benefit lines, I think, are very small and sort of
Mr. Greenfield, will you be giving a separate finance report on each of these sections? No. Okay. Are we ready for a general discussion, or you have more? Further discussion on this section? None appearing. We'll move on to the Section C, the capital. Mr. Greenfield?
All right. Move that the town approve and appropriate the proposed FY 2014 budget as presented for line item C99, capital, $2,098,000, to be provided as follows. C99, $200,000 from the sale of real estate fund, $257,000 from the Smart Growth 40R stabilization fund, and the balance from property taxes, state aid, and non-property tax local receipts.
Is there a second? Mr. Lashar?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. First, this one slide will discuss both capital and debt because, in concept, they're really the same thing. The Finance Committee has a policy to spend at least 5 percent on debt plus capital. Debt is just a way to finance capital, inside the tax levy, I should add. That means for next year, 3.84 million would be the target spending for debt and capital, and it's an important discipline that FinCom has adopted about seven years ago, because when times got lean, it was, would have been very easy to dig into the debt and, well, into the capital budgets and cut them in order to fund operations. That would have avoided the necessary cuts needed to a lower revenue environment, and it would have set back our infrastructure. Next year, there is about $2 million of debt service, so 1.8 million is what the FinCom policy would suggest as capital. You can see we're spending a little bit more than that, primarily because of the 40R stabilization fund, but a little bit more than that also. And just as a final comment, both the sale of real estate fund and the 40R are decreasing in their use over the years, so we'll be increasingly relying on general fund money and probably see a somewhat lower capital figure. I don't intend to go over the capital items in any kind of detail. There's a lot of detail in the warrant material, but I do want to discuss roads. Next year, we're proposing to spend over $800,000 in local funds for roads. We have Chapter 90 of about $900,000, as it currently stands. So you can see that green line, which is the cumulative spending projected for next year, is just about double what it was five years ago, which is great. And certainly, our roads need that. That's been a combination of an increase in the federal funds available from roads, certainly, but also a dedicated effort on the local budgeting to put a lot more emphasis on roads. And that's all I have on capital.
Further discussion? None appearing. We'll move on to the next section. Debt?
Move that the town approve and appropriate the proposed FY 2014 budget as presented for line item D99, debt, $4,368,000, to be provided as follows. Line D99, $817,305 from the MSBA construction grant, and the balance from property taxes, state aid, and non-property tax local receipts.
Is there a second? Mr. Lashar?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. It just so happens that debt for the next year and the next few is about split 50/50 between inside and outside the tax levy. In terms of future debt, voters have approved the library project, so at some point, and it's not clear to me exactly when, it could be next fall, we'll start seeing an impact on the excluded debt amount, and that'll start to increase. Again, voters approved an estimated $9.8 million. That'll work out to be about $1 million a year for the next 10 years, depending on how we finance it. There are three other projects that are in the capital plan, presented as debt, not necessarily fully approved. The cemetery garage and the DPW storage building, the garage study is funded in FY 14, I mean, I'm sorry, in FY 13 already. The DPW storage building study is proposed in FY 14, and then each are proposed to be, to come to this body as debt authorization one year later. So the cemetery garage may come to you next fall, once it's designed, and the DPW storage building would follow. Each of those is inside the tax levy. The costs are projected inside the tax levy as part of that plan I showed you last week. The school space needs that Dr. Dougherty mentioned on Thursday has been discussed and planned as an exclusion, much as the library was. So we don't have figures for that yet. We'll be developing those figures, as you mentioned, and next fall, we'll have a more complete discussion on that.
Further discussion? None appearing. We'll move on to the next section, vocational education.
Move that the town approve and appropriate the proposed FY 2014 budget as presented for line item E99, vocational education, $341,250 to be provided as follows. Line E99 for property taxes, state aid, and non-property tax local receipts.
Is there a second? Mr. Lashar?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Since we last met, I actually do have now our Northeast Metropolitan budget. It's a little higher than what I had allowed for, but there's no need to make any changes yet because we won't know the Minuteman Voke budget until next fall, probably until November, and possibly even after November town meeting. The reason for the difference is the Northeast Voke bills us on a per student in the current year for next year, but the Minuteman will bill us on the amount of students next year that are in next year, which we don't know yet. So they may have an estimate of what those, what that enrollment will be, but they actually have a cutoff of October 1st and then do their math and let us know sometime in November. So it's likely that if the Minuteman Voke budget is, as I've indicated here, we will need about $20,000 or $25,000 more for the Northeast Metropolitan budget, but there's no sense in guessing that until we know the other figure. FinCom reserves, well, I guess we haven't got to it yet, but that's a number that's been steady for many years. Because FinCom comes to this body during the year to have it replenished, there's no need to change it.
Further discussion? None appearing. We'll move on to FinCom Reserve.
Move that the town approve and appropriate the proposed FY 2014 budget as presented for line item J92, FinCom Reserve Fund, $150,000 to be provided as follows. Line J92 from property taxes, state aid, and non-property tax local receipts.
Is there a second? Second. Further discussion? Oh, excuse me, Mr. Lashar? No, no set. Further discussion? None appearing. We will move on to the next section.
Move that the town approve and appropriate the proposed FY 2014 budget as presented for line item G91, Town Administration Wages, $229,480, and the line item G92, Town Administration Expenses, $518,250, to be provided as follows. Line G91 and G92 from the property taxes, state aid, and the non-property tax local receipts.
Is there a second? Second, Mr. Lashar?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Before we go into each line item, I just thought I'd show a couple of slides that give you an overview of the town government. You can see the changes there at just under 3 percent total, with a little bit of variability within those lines. Certainly, one line that jumps out at me is community services as plus 9 percent, and when we get there, I'll tell you what it is. But it's a one-time expense. And some of the other lines really are not that much changed. The reason being that the staffing has not much changed. The column in the far right is actually the change since the peak employment over the last few years, not from one year. The only change in one year is adding a half-time DPW clerk and a couple of seasonal workers that don't show up in this chart. But you can see municipal employment has not much changed over the last several years. We're a few below the peak employment of a few years ago and very steady over the last couple of years. And you can see, from the FY 12 low, we have added a few positions back, almost all in public safety. If you recall, although this budget does not increase public safety's personnel, this body did that last November when we added another The town administration budget is quite simple. There were some transition costs associated with Mr. Hecking-Blakenner's retirement that'll be removed. We do have an increased overtime budget because meetings are carrying on and on and on, and we need more meeting minutes. We've also centralized our lease costs in this department from several other departments, so you'll see that in the library budget. The materials, or I should say, the expense budget has not increased very much because we took some of the expenses away from them and put them in this budget. The property and casualty insurance premiums have come in actually below the 5 percent, but that's okay. We'll just leave it as it is. What we don't know with some of our insurance carriers is every year, they seemingly have offered early payment discounts, but they can't guarantee that. So until we pay the bill sometime in the middle of July, we can't guarantee that there'll be a savings, although there's likely to be one.
Further discussion? None appearing. We'll move on to the next section, accounting wages.
Move that the town approve and appropriate the proposed FY 2014 budget as presented for line items H91, accounting wages, $1,158,630, and lines H92, accounting expenses, $2,300, to be provided as follows. Lines H91 and H92 from property taxes, state aid, and non-property tax local receipts.
Is there a second? Second, Mr. Lashar?
Change that to not $1,158, but $158,630.
Good try.
This budget, aside from that $1 million, is fairly straightforward. It does reduce an assistant accountant by a .1 FTE, and it's now a stipended position. We have also eliminated an overlap in funds, much like the retirement and the town manager situation. The town accountant retired a year ago, so this budget is a straightforward budget with just one full-time town accountant in there. And because this town accountant is new to the public sector, we've increased some of the professional development costs.
Further discussion? None appearing. We'll move on to Section I, finance wages.
Move that the town approve and appropriate the proposed FY 2014 budget as presented for line item I91, finance wages, $1,062,100, and line item I92, finance expenses, $610,900, to be provided as follows. Line I91 and line I92 from the property taxes, state aid, and the non-property tax local receipts.
Second, Mr. Lashar?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. We have had some changes in the appraisal function that this body may not be fully aware of. We've never really given a full update. Last year, at the end of the year in June, the Finance Committee and the Board of Selectmen had to meet in somewhat an emergency fashion and come up with over $100,000 to fund some inspections that were necessary. To make a long story short, we've got the assessing function on an excellent track now. We are sharing an appraiser with Wakefield after we had a retirement in approximately a year ago, a little more than a year ago, in Redding. We share the Wakefield Appraiser 50/50, and Wakefield also is very happy with this arrangement, so I'm not sure why, but I'm certainly thrilled. The assessing function is now going very well. Even I understand it now, and I've had a struggle with it for a few years. But this budget in front of you actually reduces- But this budget in front of you actually reduces the appraiser position to the half-person we have. Our agreement runs only through December of 2013 as a temporary measure. I would fully expect and hope to come to this body in November, if not sooner in September, and extend that by a formal vote. Right now, it's not an intermunicipal agreement. We would like to make that a permanent arrangement, and Wakefield seems very, very willing to. We've increased clerical hours in this budget, as you'll see in one or two others. It's, in this case, the half-time clerk that's added is offset by the half-time assessor that's subtracted, which is why I didn't mention it earlier. We anticipate having less elections this year, although you never know. And I got an update today that the two elections that we have tomorrow in June so far are still not funded by the state, which is interesting. We've taken away the transition costs for the town manager replacement out of HR. We've centralized this body voted in November to centralize all the wireless budgets into one place. And we have used increased postage, both in this and the town manager budget. And as you'll see in most budgets, although I won't always mention it, professional development has been increased, not to the levels where it was three or four years ago, but we're finding that the cuts we made to them were just too severe for, in some cases, what has been a turnover to a younger staff. We just need more professional development.
Further discussion? Not appearing. We'll move on to the next section, community services.
Move that the town approve and appropriate the proposed FY 2014 budget as presented for line item K91, community services wages. And line item K92, community services expenses. $519,700 to be provided as follows. Lines K91 and K92 from the property taxes state aid and non-property tax local receipts.
Second. Mr. Lashar.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. After a discussion with the Conservation Commission, we did agree to increase the Conservation Administrator's hours by three in next year's budget, and we're funding a portion of that with the Wetlands Revolving Fund. The backup building inspectors' hours also were increased actually during this current year because just there's so much activity with some of the larger projects especially. That's being funded next year, or proposed to be partly funded by the Inspections Revolving Fund, which has more than adequate reserves. We're continuing the very successful regional health arrangement with Melrose and Wakefield. The one-time expense I mentioned earlier this evening is a $75,000 expense to get some consulting help, and we'll also need quite a lot of staff help to essentially overhaul the zoning bylaw. It's a big, big project. It will take, I would say, a minimum of a year and quite possibly two years. If it weren't for that expense, this budget is in line with all others, but this is a big one-time expense. Mosquito control is now fully outsourced. For those of you that missed the selectman's presentation, I would highly invite you to watch a replay. You'll be swatting at imaginary mosquitoes for the next few hours, as I did. DPW is no longer going to do some of this task. It's all now, if you will, professionally outsessed to Middlesex mosquito.
Further discussion? Not appearing. We'll move on to the next section, library.
Move that the town approve and appropriate the proposed FY 2014 budget as presented for line items L91, library wages. And line item L92, library expenses. $284,000 to be provided as follows. Line L91 and L92 from property taxes state aid and non-property tax local receipts.
Is there a second? Second. Mr. Lashar.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Again, this budget was built last fall, so we didn't know if the library building project would succeed or not. We did discuss if it did succeed, when the library would change, when it would move. One option was to move as soon as this summer, but summer programming at the library is a very, very busy time, so the library really didn't want to do that. So it became, at what time in the fall will the library move? And we still don't have an exact answer, but it could be as late as mid-winter, say, December or so. The budget in front of you does not anticipate any changes with library staffing or library operation. Of course, we won't really know what's necessary until we have a final plan on where to move and when to move. And we may or may not need to adjust this budget during the year as that plan develops. Some of the technology expenses, as I mentioned, were moved out of this department, and the material budget, which has not always been the case, but has been the case in the last couple of years, does comply with the MAR, the Municipal Appropriation Requirement, of 15% of your budget needs to be allocated to materials, and this does that.
Further discussion? Not appearing. We'll move on to the next section, Public Works.
Move that the town approve and appropriate the proposed FY 2014 budget as presented for line item M91, Public Works wages. And line item M92, Public Works expenses. $837,750 to be provided as follows. Line M91, $50,000 from the Redding Ice Arena for support recreation wages. Line M92, $25,000 from the sale of cemetery lots to support cemetery expenses. And the balance of lines M91 and M92 for property taxes state aid and non-property tax local receipts.
Is there a second? Second. Mr. Lashar.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. This budget is one that has increased staffing. Four part-time seasonal, short-term employees were added back to the budget. They were in the budget several years ago, at a pretty modest cost, and they do quite a lot of work during the summer. One part-time clerk is added to the administration budget. The engineering office is very busy. Those roads don't end up building themselves, after all. Some of the overtime lines within the department are shifted around just based on where the employee was doing the work, as opposed to which employee was doing the work. So if it's for Parks and Highway, regardless of which employee does it, it should be recorded under Parks and Highway. There's a couple of new expenses, $10,000 for downtown plant watering for the EDC, and $1,000 each for the trails and the town forest committees as just general expenses that they did not have in the past. And lastly, on snow and ice, I don't know how easy that slide is to see. It says it's going to snow a lot next year. The red line is the actual expenses. So you can see, one full year ago, that big dip, we didn't have much snow at all. But generally, those trend lines, which are the green and blue lines, show you what's going on. Mostly, the trends are more expensive to remove snow, not how much snow. It's just more expensive. In the budgeting, we've attempted to just move this funding up every year by a certain amount, in my estimation, to try to target a number that's just below the average. I don't think we want to fund the average or anything above the average, because that means half the time you'll have overfunded it and not spent the money on something more productive. So at $625,000, which you'll see in the next set of motions, snow and ice is aimed to be slightly below what we would expect.
Further discussion? Mr. Brown.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Bill Brown, Precinct 8. I'd like to offer amendment, please, to line item M92, Public Works expense by deleting DPW account number, line 14215540540030. And that's the ED flowers for $10,000, so that the read, M92 shall read 827750. I'm taking $10,000 off it, sir.
Okay. Is there a second to that motion? Second. Mr. Brown.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. As many of you that may have been around town meeting for a few years remember, in fact, it was 11 years ago, when we got into a very tight budget, the town chose not to fund the veterans' flowers. We went out and raised the money, so now they are self-funded, so when you go to the Memorial Days, from now on, you'll see them. And I feel the same about these flowers. If the EDC or anybody else wants to water the flowers, let them raise the funds and make a perpetual fund. And as a side note, we've made a great deal of effort in the fun flowers, the veterans. We have gone to artificial flowers, in some cases, for the wreaths and the pillows, which saves us approximately $600 a year. We've gone to a less costly supplier, so we've made a great deal of effort to make sure that the flower fund stays for the veterans. And I urge you not to vote, excuse me, I urge you to vote for the amendment. Thank you.
Is there further discussion? None, oh yes, I'm sorry, over here.
Hi, Sheila Clark, Precinct 1, Chair of the EDC. With all due respect, Mr. Brown, I do not disagree with the fact that funds should be run by each committee. I would like to obviously point out that the EDC started the Redding Fall Street Fair in an order to supply the downtown with economic development and benefits to the downtown, such as the flowers. The EDC has funded this for, I think it's the last three years, from the funds from the Redding Fall Street Fair. Unfortunately, the funds from the Fall Street Fair have decreased over time due to expenses. The Fall Street Fair pays for all of its own town expenses, meaning DPW, police, fire, and health. So what the EDC decided this year was, unfortunately, due to having so many initiatives with the Building for Society Improvement Program and the retail envisioning and giving back to the actual programs that affect the businesses, we could not afford to do the watering of the flowers on top of it for the entire cost, which is why we went to the town. We look at the flower watering, not just as flower watering, but more so as an added value to the downtown. From an economic development standpoint, it's having people want to come to your downtown. I know it's aesthetic, and I know we'll always need another teacher, and we'll always need roads. But the bottom line is, if you want people to come and shop in the downtown, it really is just one more aesthetic value. That being said, you know, I would like to take into consideration the fact that I think that our residents enjoy them. We've gotten tremendous response. I wouldn't ask for any other reason than just to consider that when you're voting.
Further discussion? Not appearing. Are we ready to vote? Mr. Brown.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I'm sure that most people enjoy the adopter islands, and they don't get a cent from the town.
Further discussion? All right, we're ready to take a vote on the proposed amendment, which would decrease the amount by $10,000. All those in favor of the amendment, please raise your hand. Those opposed? And the motion does not carry. Business under, the next section, M93, the Public Works Snow and Ice. Mr. Greenfield.
Move that the town approve and appropriate the proposed FY 2014 budget as presented for line items M93, Public Works Snow and Ice expenses. $625,000. Line item M94, Public Works Street Light expenses. $200,000. And line item M95, Public Works Rubbish and Collection and Disposal expenses. $1,490,000 to be provided as follows. Line items M93, M94, and M95 from the property taxes state aid and non-property tax local receipts.
Is there a second? Second. Mr. Lashar.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I've already talked about snow and ice, so just to move on to the other two items. The street lighting budget was reduced about a year and a half ago by $50,000 due to a new rate introduced by RMLD, so that budget is operating at a lower level quite effectively. The rubbish budget is pretty well described and discussed. It's a very successful program of increasing the recycling and decreasing a lot of our costs. The budget is flat overall, although the cost is not. It's just that, if you will, the amount of savings because of lower volume is offsetting the increase in costs.
Further discussion? Not appearing. We'll move on to the next section, Public Works Rubbish and Collection.
Move that the town approve and appropriate the proposed FY 2014 budget as presented for line items N91, Public Safety Wages. And line item N92, Public Safety Expenses. $381,425 to be provided as follows. Line items, lines 91, N91, and N92 from the property taxes state aid and the non-property tax local receipts.
Is there a second? Second. Mr. Lashar.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. You can see a breakdown ahead of you there, and I'll just describe quickly each area. There's very few changes. In the police budget, there's a slight change this year in the way we're showing the ARCASA substance abuse positions. Those two positions are now fully shown and funded, if you will, in the budget, and then there's an offset shown for the grant. This is probably a better way to do it from an accounting standpoint. In recent years, particularly when it was a large federal grant, we didn't see any of it when it was fully paid for, and then you just saw a fraction last November of what the town needed to pick up. Now you can see the full cost, and you can see the grant that we're receiving. The training budget, much like the comment I made earlier, has been doubled. There's several new police officers. There's a lot of need for training. And overtime has increased, probably not quite at the rate the chief would like, but it'll do for now. Expenses are essentially level funded, and this budget has really not very much changed for next year. In dispatch, there's virtually no changes at all. Again, in this budget, we do show the grant as an offset, and that's been the case for several years, and no changes in expenses. In fire and EMS, again, no change in staffing. Overtime is increased by just a modest amount, 2.5%. Again, not quite as much as the chief would like. The ambulance billing services, RFP, will be decided shortly, and that is funded for next year. And there has been an increase in ambulance services in an expense line item associated with the fact that a medical provider that had been doing it for free, now under state law, has to provide extra services and has to charge the town because of the extra time required.
Further discussion? Yes. Ms. Anthony.
Camille Anthony, Precinct 5. Several years ago, and I'm going to put this question to the fire chief, several years ago, we had the same situation where the overtime at the fire department was becoming extremely high, and we did an assessment, and we came to the conclusion that we were better off fiscally if we increased staffing because of the overtime component. And I'm just wondering what discussion was held this year and how we're going to go forward looking at the overtime budget, because it certainly is getting, it seems like it's getting out of control on the fireside.
I'll start. You can bail me out if I catch on fire. This certainly was discussed quite a bit, Camille, during the budget process, actually starting in September. Chief Burns shared a lot of analysis with me when it was done to change from, I believe it was 44 to the 45th firefighter. That was, if you will, a no-brainer. The question was, and just so those of you that don't know, there's four groups of 11. That's the 44 basis. The four groups rotate during the week to cover the full 24 hours. The 45th firefighter, firefighter, if you will, is a floater, I'll use my terms. As there's a long-term injury, that firefighter can be assigned to one of the groups where it's most needed. The financial analysis brought to FinCom a few years ago was compelling that that 45th firefighter would more than pay for himself, and they have, by reducing that overtime. The 46th firefighter has always been marginal. Quite often, it's been the case that when we look back at history, it would have been a good idea had we done it, but it's very difficult to know ahead of time when it will be a good idea to do it. It's not as compelling as the 45th firefighter was. Some of the difficulty is, when you have injuries, long-term injuries, in the fire department, they don't necessarily line up nicely. They might happen all at once. So you don't avoid overtime just because you have another firefighter. You might slightly reduce it. But then what happens when you have full staffing during other parts of the year where that's effectively an extra person? So in answer to your question, it did come up. I'm sure it'll come up again next year. So far, the evidence is not compelling that one additional firefighter will more than pay for themselves in overtime.
Further discussion?
We do, we do bring this up and discuss almost every year, and the variables that go into producing it. And I think, I think quite often, it's folks out with injuries and other things. There is a very small percentage of opportunity that seems to be there to gain, but it would require rule changes on the part of police and fire. require rule changes on the part of police and fire, and that's, that's not happening right now. And my favorite topic, there might be some to save in details, but that's a time priority on whether the details that pick up police overtime are worth it. That's a town priority decision.
Further discussion, Mr. Phillips?
Gary Phillips, Precinct Seven. Could I see the figures once again for the total wages for police and dispatch?
Is this what you're looking for, Gary?
Yeah, there we go, right there, 4.3. Could you tell me the 4.3 for police, how many employees does that represent?
Do you know Jim's at 47? So 46, that's 46.
47?
46.
46. And dispatch?
That's nine.
Nine? And we said 44 to 46 on fire and EMT. Okay, that's it, thank you.
Further discussion? Not appearing, we're ready for the next section, Mr. Greenfield.
Move that the town approve and appropriate the proposed FY 2014 budget as presented for line item U99, School Department, $38,701,365 to be provided as follows. Line U99, from property taxes, state aid, and non-property tax local receipts.
Is there a second? Second, Mr. Stoddard, you first, okay.
Good evening, town meeting members. We'd like to spend a few minutes to review with you the FY14 School Committee budget. Before I begin, and then turn it over to Mr. Lai, we'd like to recognize the continued collaboration that we have with Peter Hackenblattner, Bob Aldashor, Finance Committee, and Board of Selectmen, in putting together a sensible budget that focuses on our students. And so we want to spend a few minutes to talk to you about that. Very quickly, to talk about, you know, where our budget comes from and how it drives everything that we do. Really focuses on our vision of where we want to go as a school district. And you can see there that the focus of this is to really take a look at everything that we can do in a fiscally responsible way to address the needs of our students and prepare them for a 21st century learning society. As we put together our vision, we focus on essentially four strategic objectives, which you see behind you, which include the learning and teaching aspect, the performance management aspect, the investment and development aspect of the school district, and then the resource allocation. And it's the combination of these four areas that drive the decisions as we develop the budget each year. So the strategic initiatives that you see here in this budget focuses on some major areas. The implementation of the Common Core state standards, which is a set of curriculum frameworks that have been adopted now by 46 states. Also, the implementation of the Massachusetts Tiered System of Support, which is a series of interventions and supports for students, both for academic needs and for behavioral health needs. In addition to this, it's also taking a look at implementing the new educator evaluation system. Last year, Reading was an early adopter of the system. This year, we are fully implementing the system along with several other school districts in the Commonwealth. And then next year, all the remaining school districts in the Commonwealth will have implemented the new educator evaluation system. In addition to that, looking at high school best practices, which focuses on, and you'll see in a minute, the, we have a larger enrollment hitting our high school next year. And so that is requiring additional staffing in order to continue to focus on our high school students and our high school needs. In addition, providing increased opportunities for planning and collaboration for our staff, the increased use of mobile learning devices, and then continuing to move forward with realizing full-day kindergarten for all our students. As I mentioned in my report the other night, next year, we will have 66% of our students in full-day kindergarten next year. So looking at the district priorities as we were developing this budget, probably the top priority, and we're seeing this need increase more and more, is the behavioral health needs of all of our students. One of the things that we are realizing is that we have an increasing number of students with high anxiety, hospitalization needs, and to provide the supports for when they come back to school is extremely critical. Without those supports in place, learning is not going to occur for those students. We also, as you heard also on the town side, professional development is extremely important as we continue to implement these new initiatives, particularly the Common Core state standards and the development of the assessments that align with that common core. We want to continue to keep our class sizes in K-2 at that recommended range of 18 to 22 students. We also want to make sure that we maintain the middle school interdisciplinary model, our 21st century of learning initiatives, which include the continued implementation of mobile learning devices. We want to make sure our technology infrastructure, our wireless, our server capacity continues to be at a place where our students can use their devices adequately. And we want to make sure that our school facilities continue to be well-maintained and clean while controlling the long-term cost and operation. We're very proud of the work that our facilities department does in keeping our facilities extremely well-maintained. And then finally, making sure that we continue to maintain and grow as we can our regular day programs, which include our art, music, our drama, physical education, foreign language, and other exploratory areas for our students. One of the things, this is a slide that we showed you last year as well, and Mr. Greenfield spoke about this in his opening remarks, is a study that was done by AmericanProgress.org. And what they did, and they did this for every single state in the country, in terms of the return of investment of the amount that is funded in school districts, and also the output rate, the different types of educational advances that a school district makes. And you can see that in this, in this slide, in the, we are in the top left-hand quadrant, which shows that Reading does have a very high return of investment on the amount of funding that they spend on our schools. One of the biggest drivers of our budget this year is enrollment. And as you can see here from this slide, the biggest enrollment increase going into next year is at our high school. Over the last four years, we've had an increase in enrollment at the high school of approximately 100 students, where no additional staffing has been added. And you'll see in the FY14 School Committee budget that there are several positions that are being added into the, for the high school to address the increased enrollment needs of our students. So at this point, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Lai, and she's going to talk a little bit about foundation budget and spending. Ms. Lai.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I think it's important to set the context here in terms of education funding, not just in Reading, but also, I think, in Massachusetts. And some of you may know how the funding works in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, but in Massachusetts, districts actually have a required amount that they must spend on education each year, and that's defined by statute in the state as the foundation budget. And the definition states that it is the minimal amount necessary to provide an adequate education. There's been a lot of research and study done on this foundation budget, and this funding formula was actually developed back in 1993 with the passage of education reform, and hasn't actually been updated in any significant way since that time. So there have been a lot of recent studies that have shown that the foundation budget is significantly underfunding education. And what that means is, since that's the basis of this funding that we get from the state, it means that that amount of funding, combined with what we can afford to pay, that most districts are not funding education in their communities just based on that foundation budget, because it doesn't, it's not perceived to be a sufficient amount to actually fund education today. On average, districts in Massachusetts therefore spend about 16% above foundation and required net school spending, which is the determined amount that we must spend on education. Reading historically has also spent over foundation budget, and we've typically spent at or about the same percentage above foundation as the state average. In this past year, it was 17% above foundation versus the statewide average of 16%. There are actually districts in the Commonwealth that spend more than 30% over foundation, and the range obviously is anywhere from at foundation, since that's the statutory minimum, to anywhere in the order of 30% above. The achievement for Reading, I think one thing that's really important is that in our community, we have very strong academic performance, and our performance consistently ranks in the top quartile in the state by all measures of academic performance. And yet, our per pupil spending ranks 293rd out of 329 operating districts. And I think that speaks to the slide that Superintendent Doherty just showed to you, where we have high academic performance for a low per pupil investment. This chart right here shows you the actual gap between required net school spending and our actual spending. What you see in this chart, the red bars that you see are actually the Chapter 70 funding that we get from the state, the blue bars are foundation budget, and the black dotted line is required net school spending, which is established, of course, by the foundation budget. The line above it, the dotted, the line with the blue diamonds, that line right there represents what we in Reading actually spend versus the foundation budget. And you can see that that gap has consistently increased, that has been the trend. There have been some years in the past that we've been even higher above foundation. That gap closed a little bit in 2010, 2011, when we had modest budget increases. And we're almost back to where we were in 2008. This chart right here shows per pupil spending. I'm not sure if you can see all the numbers. So the total expenditures, again, the difference between our district and the state for these categories is $2,386. So that's $2,300 less that we spend than the state average for these categories. And you can see that virtually every category, we spend less on a per pupil basis. The one category in the past where we actually had spent more is in professional development. But this data, which is FY11 data, which is the most recent comprehensive information that's been provided to the state, shows that even we've fallen below the state average in that category as well. Some of you may ask about the payments to out-of-district schools. That actually represents for us primarily the cost of sending children who are receiving special education services to out-of-district placements. That looks like we are much higher, obviously, than state average, but one of the reasons is because other school districts, what's also included in this number, is that they send kids to charter schools, and they send kids through school choice to other school districts. Those amounts are far less. We don't have any kids going to charter schools, and very few going to charter schools and school choice. So for us, that's why this number looks so significant. And here you see the per pupil spending trend, Reading versus the state average. And what you see is that, back, if you look back to 1999, you see that the gap between state average spending and Reading spending has been increasing. We are the lower line, and the state average is the upper line, so that that gap has been increasing. So not only do we spend less, but the amount by which we spend less has been increasing pretty significantly over the last dozen or so years. We also try to always evaluate how we are doing versus comparable communities. You can see about 12 or 13 communities here that we have established as comparable peers. This isn't based on geography, this is actually based on enrollment, based on the size of the municipal, total size of the municipal budget, as well as the average single taxpayer tax bill. So based on that selection of comparable communities, you can see that we are below even many of our comparable communities, financially comparable communities in spending as well, and that on average for these categories, for most of the categories, we rank somewhere between seventh and 10th. And this slide shows you this total school spending as a percentage, school spending as a percentage of the total municipal spending. And you can see that between 1992 and about 2002, you saw some steady increases, a little bump up there in 2002, but since that time, there's been an overall trend of a decrease that has come back up a little bit over the last several years. Some of the budget drivers, and Superintendent mentioned these, and just to go into a little bit more detail, one of the primary budget drivers is the need for additional staffing at the high school. And again, we saw, we showed you the enrollment chart that showed that trend in enrollment, not just the bump up for next year, but the trend over the last five or six years. There's also the need for the significant investment in the curriculum materials, as well as all the professional development and training that goes into teaching teachers how to change their instructional strategies to align with the common core, as well as some work that's done by teachers to align our curriculum to those common core standards. We're also seeing a significant increase in special education, out-of-district tuition, and this is due to several out-of-district, high-cost out-of-district placements. We've seen a shift in the last couple of years, notably this year, there's been some placements in some residential facilities that tend to be your higher-cost placements. We've also seen a reduction in circuit breaker amounts, and this is actually less based on state funding of circuit breaker, and just more based on the fact that we have had some, it's based on your prior year costs, and so we have had some more expensive placements age out. So we don't get as much reimbursement from the state when that happens. This budget includes the funding of all contractual step and cost of living increases contained in all our collective bargaining agreements, and also there is some additional funding provided for behavioral health supports, primarily at the secondary level. This chart shows you just the breakdown in our budget, FY14 budget, and this is by cost center. And you can see overall, and I just highlight, that the number that you see up here is different from the number that's in your, that's in the article, in the motion. It's different by amount of $310,000, and that is related primarily to the vote that you took this time last week in reallocating $250,000 from our capital budget to our operational budget to be able to fund the common core curriculum. We're also funding another $60,000 of that out of our current FY13 budget. So that's why we were able to reduce this number by 310,000. So the overall increase is actually 4.4%, not the 5.3 that you see here. And you can see that the largest increase comes in the special education and regular day. I talked about special education being driven by tuition, but it's also some of the positions that we talked about, primarily at the secondary level, behavioral health support, school psychology, speech and language, and learning center teachers. And then in regular day, it's the 4.6 teachers at the high school due to the enrollment increase that is driving that. Here you can see the allocation of our budget, and this does not, this has not changed significantly from year to year. Obviously, the largest cost center is regular day. The next largest cost center is special education, followed by school facilities, and then our other district programs, which includes extracurricular athletics, health, and district-wide technologies, technology infrastructure. And then the smallest one, administration, at 2.4%. This shows basically by function, as opposed to by cost center, how the dollars in our budget are allocated. And you can see that the most significant amount is for instructional services. And then you see the other amounts, which include other school support services, things like extracurricular and athletics, operations and maintenance, and then payments to other districts.
Ms. Lai, you've reached the limit. Do you need extra time?
Please.
A rough guess?
For the school part, I would say maybe 10 more minutes, perhaps.
Is there an objection? Then continue.
And this shows the school committee budget by category, and you can see from this slide that the largest category here of expenses is actually professional salaries. When you take all salaries together, you will see that that comprises more than eighty percent of our budget. Obviously, instruction, teaching is a very labor-intensive endeavor, and so that's the bulk of our budget, with the rest being contract services, supplies and materials, and other expenses. The supplies and material has the largest percentage increase, and we've talked about that. That's due primarily to the investment in new curriculum materials for Common Core implementation. Just so quickly, again, to review some of the highlights, additional teachers and guidance support for the bubble, we've got a new elementary math program, but that, of course, was addressed through Article Three of Town Meeting on Monday. Additionally, curriculum materials for the middle school and high school, which we also address significantly with this year's funding and this year's budget. Collaboration time and professional development for Common Core, staffing for special education at the high school, speech in particular, and learning center support, behavioral health supports at the middle and high school level. There's also an additional point-five position for the Language and Learning Disabilities Program at Parker. And we've also had to budget for a reduction in some of our grant funding, our federal grant funding, due to the anticipated impact of sequestration. So, we've budgeted a decrease, and we've had to shift some positions back to the operating budget as a result of that. We also have need for additional paraprofessional support at both the preschool and elementary school, and that's driven primarily by what is in service grids in students' individual education programs. Looking ahead to FY fifteen and some challenges that we anticipate, we will be bargaining, negotiating new collective bargaining agreements in the upcoming year. Those will go into effect for the fourteen, fifteen school year. We are anticipating an increase, a continuation of the trend that we've seen in families opting for full-day K rather than half-day K. As the Superintendent mentioned, we're at sixty-six percent. That's up from sixty percent in the prior year, and up from about fifty-four percent in the year before that. And that has an implication for both staffing and for space. We have done, I think, a tremendous job in saving money in facilities as much as possible. We were fortunate last year with somewhat of a, in FY twelve, with a somewhat mild winter, not so much the case this year. So, we think we've pretty much bottomed out on how much we can squeeze out of that without some sort of a major technological advance in energy efficiency, or some other major investment in that area. Common Core and assessment development, what we are seeing coming down the pipeline that hasn't come yet is a science, a new science curriculum, and that has yet to be released. So, we stay tuned for that. And then the MCAS assessment will be changing from MCAS to, we think, what's called the PARC assessment, and that is a technology-based assessment. It will be delivered using either laptops or other mobile devices. So, we need to make sure that we have adequate technology to administer that examination when the PARC comes into play. And we, again, continue to address and look into pre-K space needs as well. That's it for school. Do you want me to continue? I guess you want to take questions on the...
Are you all set? Okay. Questions? Any further discussion?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Linda Phillips, Precinct Seven. I had a lot of questions on a lot of the different sections, but it seems kind of redundant if you go back from the first few slides that you had. So, maybe we should stop every three pages or something, just so we can ask relevant questions while we're thinking about it and while you're presenting it. It might be a little bit more to the point, so to speak. I have a couple of questions on page one forty-one in the yellow budget. There's, the second paragraph talks about the circuit breaker, and Mr. Delai just mentioned about the concern that the circuit break is being reduced. It says, "The state regulation allows any unspent money in circuit breaker funds for, to fund special education out-of-district, the extraordinary expenses that requires to be saved and carried over into a special fund." And that gets carried over, so that helps for the next year to cover that. If you use all of those funds, then you're back at zero budgeting again, and you have to make sure that you meet all those needs. So, this was a little unclear. It said, "The goal of the regulation was to allow districts with certainty in the budgeting to, for the reimbursement offset, to save that money." Those districts that were able to carry forward the entire amount of the prior year's grant, that means they didn't spend anything of the prior year's grant, so they received money they didn't need, and was able to put the whole amount into the circuit breaker fund for the next year. And either this is correct, or I'm not understanding this. We are pleased that we have achieved that goal of carrying forward the entire amount of circuit breaker, which is no small sum, one-point-one-nine-six-six-two-nine. So, then you go to the bottom of the page in one forty-one, and one of the budget drivers is a significant increase in special education out-of-district tuition due to several high placements and a reduction in the circuit breaker reimbursement program. Whether the circuit breaker program gets reduced or not, we are one-point-nearly-two-million ahead of the game. Besides, even if we get a reduction of nine-hundred thousand, we're still one-point-two-million ahead of the game of what we need. So, I don't understand why that sentence is in there. A significant increase in special education out-of-district. Then you look at page one forty-two, the last paragraph. It said, "Under contract services, there's going to be an increase because of out-of-district tech schools are now going to be considered special education tuition." So, it said, "This expense is properly classified as a contracting consulting service. As a result, a corresponding decrease in special education private day tuitions." So, we have all this money in circuit breaker, we're carrying forward, but one of the budget drivers is because we need, because the costs are increasing, when we're not sure if they are or not, or maybe if they are, we certainly have more than enough money to cover it. And then the other page says, "We have a decrease in special education daytime tuition." So, one thing says one thing, and one thing is the other, and they're not quite driving in my mind. The other budget driver is the additional staffing at the high school. There's sixty-one more students in the budget. I've read the whole thing, sixty-one more students. But when they were in middle school, they didn't need any more teachers. And in middle schools, are a lot smaller than a twelve-hundred to thirteen-hundred enrollment in the high school. So, they're going to hire four-point-six more teachers, which means for those sixty-one students, they're going to have sixteen students in a classroom. Unless there's some special kind of students, I don't know why we would have to have a class size that small in the high school. The other thing is, when you look on the other page in the budget, on page one forty-nine, it says, "Historically, anywhere between four percent to thirteen percent of eighth-grade students do not move on to the high school." So, four percent, or thirteen percent of the sixty-one increase they're expecting, is not sixty-one percent, because a lot of parents choose to send their children to private high schools. So, that's the main budget driver, is to have four-point-six more teachers for sixty-one more students, and we're not going to get sixty-one more students. So, that's, that doesn't drive either. So, and the other thing was, our elementary enrollments are the same as they were thirteen years ago, when we needed a new elementary school with eighteen more classrooms. The high school is going up thirty-four total. I don't think that's a large, really large increase. And then after next year, it's going to reduce by thirty. So, I'm not sure that the message we're giving is absolutely accurate about what the needs are for the school department. The other comment is about the all-day kindergarten, sixty-six percent increase in all-day programming. It's not mandated by the state. That means it's an optional thing that parents pay for. When that was started years ago, when Dr. Haratunian was here, it was intended to be an entrepreneur-money-making facility, program that would gain revenue for the town and help to pay for the kindergarten program, pay the salaries of the teachers. Then we had Dear Mr. Scatini, who wrote a memo saying, "We need to reconsider this because it's not making any money. It's costing us more than we thought, and parents have other options to send their children to all-day kindergarten programs." So, I think we need to stop and look and keep a perspective on what we need to do and what we want to do. And we certainly need to do some things, and we need to do that no matter the cost. But there are other things that are things that we want, and in our personal lives, we're learning. We can't have everything we want. We can only do what we need. And I think the school department needs to keep that in perspective when they're asking for more money for programs that maybe they don't need. Thank you.
Ms. Delai?
I guess I'll address the ones that, the things that are actually questions I can address, which is, I think you had a question about the circuit breaker. The circuit breaker, we budget, we have a number in the budget as an offset for circuit breaker, and that was the number that you saw in here, the one-point-one figure that you noted. We have that money currently in our circuit breaker fund. It's a special revenue fund, and it's sitting there now from FY, in FY thirteen. We're actually receiving it as we go, so we haven't, we have yet to receive our fourth quarter payment. But we now know that going into next year, we have one-point-one million dollars in that fund, and so that is the offset that we've used for next year. At this stage of the game, we don't know what we're going to receive for next year for circuit breaker. That is dependent upon the state budget process, that is dependent upon how DESE chooses to allocate those funds, it's dependent upon what the, what the per pupil number is above which we get circuit breaker funding. That doesn't give us any budget certainty for this year. If we were to try to use next year's number, we are in, you know, late April, almost May, and we still don't know from the state what that number's going to be like. It was for that reason that the DESE and the state legislature allowed for circuit breaker funds to be carried forward. This process of building up, if you will, the circuit breaker fund has taken us several years. I've been here for nine years, and it's always sort of been a goal, because it's been in the statute, to try to get us to that point where we have essentially prefunded our circuit breaker offset. So, that's where we are right now. We have absolute certainty that we know we're going to receive one-point-one million dollars this year, and that's what we're using as an offset for next year. The increase in special education district, out-of-district tuition, that is absolutely true. There are some high-cost residential and other placements that we know about for next year that we now have in next year's budget. That doesn't necessarily conflict with what we're saying on page one forty-two. The, what happened, what we're describing on page one forty-two is that there were services provided to students that were vocational training services provided to special ed that had been previously charged to tuition, and that's not accurate, and it's not in accordance with DESE reporting. So, we have shifted that to contract services where it should be reported. It is the case that there has been a decrease in private day tuitions, but there has been a corresponding increase in residential treatments, excuse me, placements. And I think that that's what we've explained during the budget presentation, is that we've seen a shift. So, one category of tuition has gone down, but a different category, which is more expensive category, has increased, leading to a net overall increase of over two-hundred thousand dollars in that tuition amount.
Mr. Brown?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Bill Brown, Precinct Eight. Mary, how many people in total are employed in the school system right now?
Permanent employees, we have five-hundred-and-fifty-seven FTEs.
Five what?
Five-hundred-and-fifty-seven FTEs.
Thank you. It's interesting to note that fifty years ago, we had the exact same number of students, give or take a few, and we had three-hundred people employed. A hundred years ago, the total budget was forty-three thousand dollars.
Thomas Day Ryan, Precinct One. I hope you don't mind if I inject a little levity in these serious deliberations. First, I'd like to compliment the School Committee and School Department on its comprehensive report and the warrant. I mention this because a few years ago, many persons complained about the lack of information these two bodies provided in the budget. Now I hear questions about why we have a hundred-and-sixty-three pages filled with numerous details. The one item I wish to address is on Yellow Page one fifty-five, Figure Thirteen, Municipal Revenue Sources. In the paragraph below the chart, there's a line starting on line three, which reads as follows. "Chapter Seventy funding is determined by first calculating a foundation budget amount for each community based on its enrollment, and then comparing that foundation amount to the community's ability to pay as determined by its per capita income and property values." I call your attention to the word ITS apostrophe. This is a glaring error. I've seen ITS, which is possessive, IT apostrophe S, which is contraction of two words, it is, but this ITS apostrophe has to be a first. There's no excuse for this error. Then I refer to you to Page one ninety-one, which lists staffing by position, thirty-four in number. My suggestion is this. With a thirty-eight million dollar budget, can't we fund a position of proofreader and spare, and spare your future embarrassment, especially when starting on Page one thirty, the first twenty-nine of your yellow pages contain sixty-seven errors in grammar, spelling, and punctuation? Thank you.
Further discussion? Ms. Binda?
Thank you. Angela Binda, Precinct Five. I'm the parent of one of, an eighth-grade student. And while this class was in kindergarten through first or second grade, the numbers were kept pretty low because they were younger. From about third grade on to fifth grade, the student-teacher ratio increased above what I'd seen other classes. And then in middle school, parents suggested hiring another teacher, but the, we were told that because it's team-taught, hiring a single teacher wouldn't really work out. So, last year, my son was in a classroom. In his math class, there were thirty-one kids. Not uncommon for this group of kids to have numbers in the thirties, which, having watched enrollment numbers and really been keeping an eye on them throughout his and my tenth graders' career here, the numbers have always been kept really small, and it's been a priority. But with this group, the numbers really have been much higher than they have been. And it's been a concern of parents to see the numbers go above thirty, which I think is really unheard of for most of the time. So, the eighth-grade parents are very appreciative that there will be more teachers hired so that when they get to high school, those numbers will come down.
Further discussion?
Yes, in the back. So, Gary Nye, Precinct Five. My question is, the facilities budget, is that, when you, when you were comparing the Reading Public Schools with the nine other districts, is that categorized in there? Is that, is that figured into it, the font, you know, per pupil expenditure, I guess?
The overall per pupil, when you compare to other districts...
Uh, the overall per pupil, when it, when you compare to other districts, the chart I showed, I think, just had several categories, I believe. I don't know that. Yeah, you're talking about this one?
Correct, yeah.
Right, so what we've done, there's a, the total in district would include facilities. The, then you see a broken-out administration, supplies and materials-
Right.
-professional development classroom, but the total does include facilities.
So our ranking would be based upon other districts that potentially are not including facilities in their budget?
No, they, they, all of the districts, we have to report to the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. It's called the end-of-year, um, per pupil report. And there are certain categories, and we all have to report our, our expenses the same way. And this actually gets used not only for DESE, but gets reported to the state, the federal government, NCS, and is used for a variety of purposes. So there is a standardization by which we all have to report expenses.
Okay, I see that. Yeah, that makes sense. And then with the new education evali- educator evaluation system, when you look up there on this slide, you look under Administration, um, we're, we're way down in comparison, maybe third from the bottom or fourth from the bottom. Do you anticipate that being an additional cost at some point, based on what I've heard from other districts, and you're, you've partially implemented it?
It, it is an issue that we're keeping a close eye on. It is one of the things that I am also hearing in other school districts, the additional workload that is on building principals and other administrators with the system. But there is nothing in this budget to-
To accommodate that.
...address that need.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Further discussion? Yes?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Harry Simmons, Precinct Four. Uh, 280 pages of very detailed information. You're to be commended on getting the information out. One suggestion for an old guy. Uh, don't use colors, so I'm reading black on black on the charts. Use some structural, like crosshatching and things. It's hard to read those charts. Thank you.
Further discussion? Yes?
Good evening, Mr. Moderator. Andrew Harlehey from Precinct One. Um, appreciate all the great detail in the, uh, in the book here. I didn't see anything on, um, maybe I missed it, but I didn't see anything with the, uh, with the new 40R developments being, uh, starting to get filled. Uh, are we gonna get any 40S money for the additional students, if there are any? And if so, where's it going?
Ms. Tackenbacher?
To date, we don't have any schoolchildren out of the 40R development, uh, and therefore there would be no 40S payment. Uh, if we get to a point where there are schoolchildren above the threshold, then we would certainly apply for 40S payments.
Further discussion? Mr. Phillips?
I'd just like to make a rec- Gary Phillips, Precinct Seven. I'd just like to make a recommendation. I see that there is a real significant increase in, um, what you've identified as, uh, supplies and materials, and that the, uh, single most expensive, uh, element in that increases, uh, lies in your decision to dispose of the everyday mathematics curriculum. Uh, I'd just like to commend you for that. Having had two children who went through the school system and caused us much grief and agony at home when we found we weren't able to assist them with their homework, we're glad to see that you are replacing the program. Uh, I can remember my daughter coming home from school one night to tell me, as a product of the everyday math course, that there were only three kinds of people in this world, those who could count and those who couldn't. Uh, my suggestion is that, uh, I see you say that you will decide on the new curriculum based on, of, uh, let's see, I guess, an evaluation through a collaborative process, including district leadership, building leadership, and instructional staff. Uh, I understand from, uh, acquainting ourselves with the history of the everyday mathematics, uh, choice, that most of the instructional staff, most of the teachers, uh, gave, uh, a response of disapproval, they didn't like it. Nonetheless, their recommendations were ignored. I would only strongly suggest and ask that, uh, what the administrators and teachers have to say about your next choice for math course, uh, really rely heavily on what the staff and the teachers have to say. And I do hope it is something more oriented toward a computational approach. And I think that comments like this, uh, in the midst of a, uh, budget discussion are most significant because we know the end result of education is for, uh, children to be able to perform in the real world. So, thank you for listening.
Further discussion? Not appearing. We will move on to the next section. Uh, Mr. Greenfield, make a motion.
We're on Town, Town Facility.
Yes?
Move that the Town approve and appropriate the proposed FY 2014 budget as presented for line item V99, Town Facilities. $704,633 to be provided as follows. Line V99 from property taxes, state aid, and non-property tax local receipts.
Is there a second? Second? Ms. Delai?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Uh, the Town Building Maintenance Budget is, uh, projected, the request is increasing by just 0.1 percent. Um, as you can see from this, uh, chart right here, in terms of the different categories of expending, the largest category here is for other expenses, and that includes basically the heating, uh, of the buildings, water and sewer, and electricity. And it, the next highest is the salary, and that really, that salary line funds the three FTE custodial staff who, uh, work for the town buildings and clean the town buildings. We also have contracted services. We have an outsourced, uh, cleaning contractor who does cleaning in four of the seven town buildings. Uh, overall, as I, as I said, the budget is increasing just 0.1 percent. The salary increase stems from collective bargaining increases. Uh, the reason why you're not seeing a significant increase here is that there are, um, there are not very many expenses related to repair and maintenance of the library as a result of the project that will be happening. There's still some funding in there for electricity and water and sewer during the construction period, but, uh, the, uh, expenses related to repair and maintenance have obviously been backed out of this budget since the, the building will be renovated. Um, I think I've actually said this, the other area in terms of, uh, utility increases is that we are projecting rate increases of 5% based on what we've been advised by Reading Municipal Life Department. We were also advised at the time of developing this budget of water and sewer rates projected to increase 5%. I think I just recently read that overall that rate increases is, um, pretty close to what, what has been approved. Um, and then there were some water rate increases in FY 13. They were a little bit higher than what we projected, and we've made this up a little bit in FY 14. But, uh, overall, this is what's driving the increases for the Town Building Maintenance Budget, which is extremely moderate.
Further discussion? Yes?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. John Sasso, Precinct Two. Just a quick question. I'm looking, um, at the chart on page 271 for reference. Um, and I, there's a line on extraordinary maintenance, and I, I, I guess it's a two-part question. First, I'm just curious, I, I did see one comment about the Town Hall, uh, reconfiguration and community services. But, uh, I'm just curious what, you know, other things fall into that extraordinary maintenance category? Is it related to age of buildings, unplanned issues that come up? And then I guess the second question, maybe more generally, is, um, and, and I, I don't wanna go back to the schools, but just in relative to these buildings and their age, as obviously we've continued to invest in, in new buildings and, you know, the high school, obviously, the library project coming up, uh, the police station and the fire station many, many years ago. Do we expect additional extraordinary maintenance things, and how are we projecting those into the budget, given their age?
Sure. Uh, in terms of when we are budgeting for extraordinary expenses, oh, I guess I should start by saying extraordinary expenses are den- are generally things that are either unplanned for, or this is, in, on a historic basis, which this is what this chart is showing, FY 12, it includes any capital appropriations, not, not something that's funded from a capital fund, but any of the capital appropriations you make as part of the capital fund, this is where we record those expenditures. So they weren't your ordinary repair and maintenance that we do as part of the budget. They were above and beyond, which is why they're categorized as, as extraordinary. In terms of budgeting from year to year in the budget, what we generally tend to do is look at, we, you see this as a contingency fund almost, and we look in the past at what the amount, the relative amount of unplanned expenses were, and we sort of budget that percentages as, that percentage as extraordinary maintenance in the budget.
But those don't take the capital, the, the items that show up in the capital budget, like roof repairs and things, those don't show up in this area after, 'cause those are, that's, that's a capital expense, not a, not an operating expense.
Historically, they will show up here, because when you appropriate, when this body appropriates that, those capital dollars, they do actually get put into our general fund budget. And so they are reported as a general fund expense historically. In the budget for the FY 14, no, we don't show them because they're part of that capital plan, they haven't been approved. But when, uh, when July 1 comes, if there's been 40, $50,000 appropriated for various capital expenses for the Town Hall, it does get put into our general fund, and so it has to be reported that way.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Yep.
Further discussion? Not appearing, we'll move on to the Water Enterprise Fund. Mr. Greenfield?
Move that the Town approve and appropriate the proposed FY 2014 budget as presented for line item W99, Water Enterprise Fund. $5,011,429 to be provided as follows. Lines W99 from user fees and other charges.
Is there a second? Second? Ms. Delaisha?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I'll just quickly give you an overview of all three reserve, uh, enterprise funds, primarily water and sewer. Um, right now, both water and sewer have in excess of, uh, reserves of a 10% reserve target, I should say. So there are more than enough reserves to, uh, handle any emergencies. The Board of Selectmen last week had the water and sewer and stormwater rate hearings, so I'll get into the results of those, but the, um, the result of having extra reserves are to help reduce rates. It's important that MWA assessments are now more than half of the combined water and sewer budgets, so if you will, more than half of the expenses are pretty much out of our control in Reading. We try to do the best we can with the other 45% in terms of planning it as best we can. We also look at the MWA forecast, which varies. It's not only a certain increase, but it varies year to year, quite a bit in some cases. And we try to capital plan around the vol- the volatility in the MWA budgets. So we do the best we can with what controls we have at our level. From the period FY 12 to 17, some of that backwards, most of that forwards, the MWA assessments were up 6% a year, but our local costs, if you will, were up about 1% a year. So that gives you a picture of how to, how that fits together. For specifically, starting with water, which is the motion in front of you, rates were set last week at up 2.3%. Uh, rates have four components. Generally, the budget is the only one that matters, and this year, that's the only one that matters, so we'll skip the other three. Um, wages, in this case, are up 2.6%. All other expenses, aside from the MWA, were actually down. And then debt and capital combined were slightly lower. So the total local costs is negative. Um, the preliminary MWA assessment we have is up a little more than 2%. The gross budget, if you will, was actually down, but because the Selectmen voted not to use any reserves in FY 14, the rates were up slightly.
All set. Further discussion? Yes?
Move that the Town approve and appropriate the proposed FY 2014-
Excuse me, we have, we have, uh, we have discussion over here.
Uh, Steve Herrick, Precinct Eight. I recall that we came here last fall, and I think one of the things that we voted on was a, uh, special payment of some sort, because for some confounding reason, we actually didn't use enough water. And we ended up having, uh, an extra penalty for being too conservative-minded, I guess. How does, uh, this particular view of our water usage take that into account? Are we assuming that we hit whatever kind of usage is planned by the MWA?
Uh, last year, this body had to appropriate 200,000 from reserves in both water and sewer because of conservation efforts. We had made a poor guess, if you will, on the amount of water we'd sell. Um, this year, we are selling more water than we budgeted, if you will, so there's a slight surplus, maybe 75 or 100,000. The budget built for FY 14 did not need to make any rate adjustments for further conservation. So, and if you will, there's still a cushion built in of about 3% to 5% further conservation that could happen, and rates won't be impacted. So it was a little unusual last year, although becoming more common throughout the state. Because of conservation, we actually had a revenue shortage. Um, that's not the case in the current year and should not be the case next year. We made the adjustment for the conservation we saw, and it should be adequate.
So do you think the MWA has adjusted their rates accordingly as well?
Well, they face the same problem, and that's an excellent question. And, you know, at the end of the day, they're, they cannot have a revenue deficit either. So we only see sort of the net result of their rates. Um, you know, they may have gone through the same internal exercise. We only see the final product, so I don't really know the details.
Further discussion? Not appearing, move to the next section. Mr. Greenfield?
Move that the- Move that the Town approve and appropriate the proposed FY 2014 budget as presented for line item X99, Sewer Enterprise Fund. $5,741,407 to be provided as follows. Line X99, 75,000 from sewer reserves, and the balance from user fees and other charges.
Is there a second? Second? Further discussion? Ms. Delaisha?
Um, thank you, Mr. Moderator. You can see on the slide, sewer rates are up just under 6%, so the combined water and sewer is just over 4%. Um, it's somewhat difficult for me to talk about these in one year, because we're looking out 10 years at a time. But just for next year, the actual local increase in costs in sewer is higher. Um, remember that sewer is about 3/4 MWA and 1/4 Reading expenses, but because of some capital plans, particularly some sewer station rehab work we needed to do, um, the local costs are a little higher for FY 14 and then drop off in future years. The preliminary assessment out of the MWA is a little more than 3%. Um, and much like water, it's a low figure for FY 14, but just to give you a background, um, the last forecast I saw from the MWA had combined rates of 8, 6, and 8 over the three years after next year, so we'll see how those look. Um, again, the gross budget here is up 4%. We, uh, in the rate hearing last week, the Selectmen agreed to use 75,000 in reserves, which is a little less than we're using this year, so the net budget and the rates are up a little bit more than the actual budget. And, and this is because of that forecast of 8, 6, and 8. If 3/4 of your budget is gonna start going up by any number near that, you really have to hang on to your sewer reserves to try to keep that rate down in the future.
Further discussion? Not appearing, we ready for the next section. Stormwater Enterprise Fund.
Move that the Town approve and appropriate the proposed FY 2014 budget as presented for line item Y99, Stormwater Enterprise Fund. $392,846 to be provided as follows. Line Y99, 30,000 from the stormwater reserves, and the balance from the user fees and other charges.
Is there a second? Second? Ms. Delaisha?
Um, thank you, Mr. Moderator. Uh, the Stormwater Enterprise Fund is effectively unchanged next year, and the residential rate is also unchanged. Um, the issue that we still haven't fully grappled with in this is two large river projects that are now scheduled for FY 20 to give us plenty of discussion. Um, the Selectmen and others will weigh in on how to best attack those projects, and whether to do them within this stormwater fund or to do them some other method. But for the foreseeable future, 40 dollars at the residential level should be able to hold.
Further discussion? Yes, Mr. Lynch?
Bob Lynch, Precinct Six. Um, when this enterprise fund was originally, uh, conceived, I thought it wasn't supposed to be used for anything that- be used for anything that had been done in the past through regular budget.
That's generally true. It's employees that are doing different work, they may be the same employee, but because of regulations, they're doing different work. The only expense I can think of that is borne by this budget that used to be borne by another is some street sweeping. That's the only thing I'm familiar with, though.
Well, as far as the Saugus River and the Abajona projects go in and cleaning them out and relining them, we've never done anything like that in the past.
Not in the recent past, certainly. Not to the extent that these are contemplated. These are contemplated to be multimillion dollar projects. So, no.
And how many personnel do you, have you assigned to this enterprise fund so far?
Right now, there's three. There was two at inception, and then the town meeting added an engineer out of the general fund and into this fund, I think, two years ago, because more than one point oh FTEs of engineering work is going into this effort.
Okay, thank you.
Further discussion? Not appearing, we're ready for a motion on the entire budget. Mr. Greenfield?
Move that the town approve and appropriate the proposed FY2014 budget, exclusive of state and county assessments. Of ninety thousand, ninety million, seven hundred and fourteen, seven hundred and nineteen thousand, five hundred and sixty-one dollars. Representing the total of all motions made under Article 11 as amended, funds are to be provided as set forth in said motions as amended.
Is there a second? Second. Now, this requires a two-thirds vote, so do I still have all of my counters? I do. All those in favor of the motion under the budget, please rise. Twenty-three.
Thirty-six.
Thirty-six.
Thirty-three.
Thirty-three.
Forty-six.
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 Forty-six, okay. And those opposed?
Zero.
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 Zero. Zero. The vote being a hundred thirty-eight in the affirmative and zero in the negative, the motion carries. Mr. Bonazzoli moves that we take Article Three from the table. Is there a second? Second. All, Ms. Point of Investigation, yes?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Rick Schubert, Precinct Seven. If I could take a minute here and go back to Article 25, and just inform this body about Sheila Spinney. Judging from the reaction when her name was called, I guess most people aren't aware of her circumstance and her fate. I personally didn't know Sheila, but I certainly recognized her face in this body as I sat in the front for years. And so I thought it was important to share what I know about Sheila. My understanding is that in February of this year, she was suddenly diagnosed with cancer, and within a few short weeks, came to pass away. I know she was a member of this body, a member of this community. I know she was too young, she was still in her fifties. I know she had a family, a husband, and some children. And so I thought it was important for us to recognize her contribution, not only as a town meeting member, but also as a member of this community, and to offer our condolences to her friends and her family at our passing. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Schubert. Where were we? Oh, we have a motion to take Article Three from the table. Is there a second? Second. All those in favor, please raise your hand. Those opposed, motion carries. I'm going to take, we have four instructional motions, and I'm going to take them in the order that they happen to be on my desk here. Mr. Brown, you get first crack.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Bill Brown, Precinct Eight. Move that the Home Rule Petition Committee be formed to review the Town of Reading Home Rule Charter, and said committee shall have one member, one town meeting member from each precinct to be appointed by the moderator, and the moderator who shall serve as the chairman. Said committee shall report its findings and recommendations to the annual town meeting of 2014, or may be extended until the follow-up meeting of 2014 by a majority vote of town meeting. Said committee shall convene under the rules of the open meeting laws.
Is there a second? Second, Mr. Brown?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. The other, for you, though, that may not realize, the charter was formally reviewed in 2004. And since then, there's been a few things I think that may have to be, should be looked at. The other evening, I had a somewhat dispute with the town clerk over newly-elected town meeting members not being able to vote at the precinct meeting, and she pointed out to me rightfully, that under law, you don't even have to be, take an oath of office to be a town meeting member. But yet, if you fail to do so, you can be thrown out of town meeting. One of my favorite ones is the FinCom does not have to re, by charter, has to report to us seven days prior to approval or disapproval, and as we know, Town Council has said, that doesn't have to apply anymore. We've had a Rules Committee. I don't think we've met in the last four or five years. Should that be looked at? I don't know. We have, the charter allows that multi-member bodies determine its own rules and regulations, and I suggest that this is not good, not only for the bodies, but also for the people that might be attending those committees. Except as prescribed by law, I would suggest perhaps Robert's Rules or Order or whatever. Two years ago, we debated the size of town meeting, and all hell broke loose, so now we can't descri, you know, decrease the size of town meeting. And yet, we see tonight, we only have about a hundred and thirty-five, a hundred and forty people attending, and that has been the average since then. Should it be cut? I don't know. Maybe it's a good question for some of the other people. Hold on a minute, let me see if I can flip the pages here, thank you. One of the questions that has come up, we do have a position of Assistant Town Manager. It is not in the charter. An acting town manager is limited to the duties he can perform by state law or by the charter, excuse me. The other thing that we have heard of recently is that town hall is closed on Fridays, so therefore, the definition of computation of time is questionable. And finally, there is no provision in the charter to have a charter situation. And I'm prescribed, one thing I'm suggesting for reason for town meeting members, for this committee to be under the open meeting laws, as many of you may not know, town meeting is not subject to the open meeting laws, thus any committees created by it are not subject to the open meeting laws. But I like open transparency of government. Thank you.
Further discussion? Not appearing, are we ready for the vote? All those in favor of the instructional motion, please raise your hand. Those opposed? And the motion carries. Second instructional motion is by Mr. Lynch.
Bob Lynch, Precinct Six. To bring to town meeting the subject of microphones being brought to members when they are recognized to speak.
Is there a second? Second, Mr. Lynch?
This is my second go-around with town meeting. Most of the first eighteen years, the microphone was brought to us wherever you were standing once you were recognized by the moderator. I see people getting, a whole line of people getting up while someone tries to exit the aisle to be able to speak. I'm just curious of what the rest of town meeting thinks about going back to microphones being handed down the aisle when someone wants to speak.
Further discussion, Mr. Brown?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Bill Brown, Precinct Eight. Being the second longest-serving town meeting member, in all due respect to Mr. Lynch, there's many people in this world that don't have the right to speak as we do. If you can't walk across, by your neighbors and walk to a microphone, I feel sorry for you.
Further discussion? Not appearing, is there one down there?
No.
Not appearing, are we ready for the vote? All those in favor of the instructional motion, please raise your hand. Those opposed? And the motion does not carry. The third one is from Ms. Binda.
Thank you, Angela Binda, Precinct Five. Move that town meeting instruct the CPDC to rewrite zoning bylaws to prohibit electronic billboards from being erected in the town of Reading, and to have a warrant article to that effect ready for the November 2013 subsequent town meeting.
Is there a second? Second, Ms. Binda?
The purpose of my instructional motion is ultimately to prohibit electronic billboards in the town of Reading. There are many reasons for this, among them, to minimize adverse financial and visual impact on nearby properties and residential neighborhoods, to enhance the visual environment, and to reduce distractions to drivers. Lincoln, Lexington, Concord, and Charleston District of Boston are all billboard-free areas. Recently, the City Council of Woburn rejected a proposal to place an electronic billboard in Woburn. This past January, when Clear Channel wished to place an electronic billboard at the mobile station on West Street, Woburn Alderman Darlene Mercer-Brown appeared at the Reading Board of Selectmen meeting to ask the town of Reading to reject Clear Channel's proposal. Woburn Mayor Scott Galvin wrote to our town manager and requested that, quote, "Reading also look unfavorably upon electronic billboards," and to reject the proposal. After several public meetings where the electronic billboard was discussed, and strong public sentiment against it, I hope there would be an article on this town meeting warrant prohibiting electronic billboards in Reading, closing the door on this, on billboard, electronic billboards. The preliminary warrant published in February contained such an article, preliminarily numbered Article 24, and it was written that it was sponsored by the Board of Selectmen. The intent of Article 24 was to, quote, "to prohibit all billboards in the town of Reading." It eliminated all off-premises signs and business A zoning. I thought it was a very appropriate article for discussion by town meeting, and reflected the sentiment of the majority of citizens of Reading. This Article 24, however, did not appear in the next copy of the town warrant, and the selectmen were given, and the selectmen did not have the opportunity to vote on it or place it on the final warrant. It is important to make changes now to the zoning bylaw that allow billboards, while the issue is still fresh in our minds, and to not wait until Clear Channel or another billboard company approaches the town again. I believe that zoning changes and changes to other bylaws are best handled through the commission or the committee which oversees those bylaws, and not through citizens' petitions, where groups of citizens attempt to rewrite bylaws that they may not fully understand. So I'm requesting that the CPDC take up this issue. I hesitate to direct the work of the CPDC. They do a great job setting their own priorities, and they always have a full workload. I also understand that they may address this issue of electronic billboards and reworking signage bylaws. However, I believe there is enough public sentiment against the proposed billboard to deal with this issue separately and immediately. Through the CPDC's usual procedures, residents will have the time and opportunity to express their opinions, both in favor and against, in an, in an open, transparent, and fair public process, so, open, transparent, and fair public process can take place. I respectfully request town meeting members to support my instructional motion to direct the CPDC to amend the zoning bylaws to prohibit, prohibit electronic billboards in the town of Reading. Thank you.
Ms. Dackenblattner?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Town meeting members, in the budget you just approved, there is money for a, basically a complete rewrite of the zoning bylaw. So there are two things that I would say. One is, the CPDC is going to be extremely busy with that, that's a huge project. And secondly, this perhaps should be done in the context of that, in which case, the deadline of November town meeting would be unrealistic. Maybe November of 2014 would be a more realistic timeframe if the CPDC is to include that in the overall rewrite of the zoning bylaw.
Further discussion? Not appearing, are we ready for the vote? All those in favor of the instructional motion, please raise your hand. Those opposed? And the motion carries. Fourth one is by Mr. DeDario.
All right, thank you, Mr. Moderator. Ron DeDario, Precinct Six. This is the last thing that we're going to do as town meeting tonight, I hope so, I'm going to make a shot, because I know otherwise I could be in trouble. I'd like to move that the library hours be reconsidered. When the new library renovation is complete, I'm asking that the selectmen, town manager, and town meeting consider extending the library hours on Thursday from 1:00 p.m. to 9:00 p.m., to 9:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m., and on Sunday from 2:00 p.m. to 5:00 p.m., to change them to 12:00 p.m. to 5:00 p.m.
Is there a second? Second, Mr. DeDario?
With our new library, soon to become one of the jewels of the town, it would make a lot of sense to make that facility available. Right now, the library is open Monday through Wednesday, nine to nine, Thursday, one, one to nine, Friday, nine to five, Saturday, nine to five, and Sunday, two to five. On that Thursday, it's really kind of an oddball. Probably once every six weeks, I'm there on Thursday around 10:00. And to, to be honest with you, I sort of sit in the parking lot, and I sort of have about four or five people come in, and I try to save them the walk to the door, to tell them that the library is closed, and to come back at 1:00. I do think it would be helpful for a whole bunch of people, from mothers to seniors, to keep out, to open the library and make use of it. On the Sunday, the two to five, really, if you think about it, Sunday is the one day that many of our working people, both moms and dads, men and women, can use the library. On weekdays, people are working, they come home, they have dinner, the kids, et cetera. It's not easy to get to the library, plus they're exhausted. Saturday tends to be a workday. Nine to five, it's not always easy. So Sunday could be the one day when working people could have a minute to, to go to the library, relax, and maybe, maybe look up something. And two o'clock to, two to five is quick. I'm not really a huge football fan, except for the Patriots, but the Patriots started two, game over, five. So not a bad idea to give some people that 12 to two open library. So I would ask that this be considered. Thank you.
Further discussion? Yes, Ms. Anthony?
Well, I would just like to say that Ron is right on when he says that Thursday's a problem. The garden club does two cleanups at the library, because that's our, we did the design, we're in charge of it, all of the garden in front. We have to have had, and it just happened two weeks ago, there must have been twenty people that drove through, some of them we got before they got out of their car, who are, and we were there from 10 to 12. And it's the second time it's happened. And so it really is a problem. And I've said, would you please put a sign up out there, so at least people know not to come up? But I think, really, as Ron said, we're getting a new library, it would be good to have it staffed. So, I agree, Ron.
Further discussion? Not appearing, are we ready for the vote? All those in favor of the instructional motion, please raise your hand. Those opposed? And the motion carries. Ms. Dackenblattner?
So I have now attended my last town meeting as your town manager. I, thank you. I didn't, I didn't say that for...
Those opposed? And the motion carries. Ms. Dackenblattner.
So I have now attended my last town meeting as your town manager. I didn't say that for-- I didn't say that for that. I think, over the last quarter of a century, we as a community have accomplished a tremendous amount, and I think that's because of the strong volunteer leadership we have in the community, including town meeting and your moderator, including the boards of selectmen, school committees, and the elected and appointed boards, committees, and commissions of this town. I think we've also accomplished it because of very committed and talented senior staff in the town, with the superintendent of schools and his staff, our town accountant, our finance director, our public safety department heads, our public works department head, library director, and our assistant town manager. And they're really a bedrock, and I don't think you realize how lucky you are to have them. We also have excellent staff all the way through the lines, and they are committed to doing the best they can for this community day after day. And last but not least, I leave you now in the very capable hands of your new town manager and my assistant for the last seven years, Bob Lee Shore. I wish you all the very best of luck, and thank you for a quarter century.
Motion to move to adjourn Siney Die. Is there a second? Second. All those in favor, please signify by raising your right hand. Those opposed? This town meeting stands adjourned. Siney dies.